All right. Ready now? Great, thank you. I will call the meeting to order. A few moments to talk about meeting logistics and remote instructions. Anyone's here joining remotely, we'd ask you to change your name to be your first and last name to know who we're talking to. Who speaks either online or here in person, we'd ask you to state your name and where you live. Keep your comments and questions to under three minutes. And if you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to the topic at hand. If you wish to speak, you must be called on by the mayor. You may make a statement or ask questions, but if you have multiple questions, please ask them all at one time. And if you speak out of turn, discuss non-german topics. Or go on too long, you will be reminded of the need to adhere to the expectations I've just mentioned. We have a couple of changes to the agenda. Item eighteen homelessness requests for resources is not ready to go, so we'll be pulling that. And and item thirteen, the budget workshop. I think we're going to move up earlier on the agenda, although Kelly, I'm not sure exactly.
I don't hear anything.
What what spot will put that in?
Where is sound?
Don't know, honey.
If you want.
And we are now to. So with those changes, is the agenda acceptable to the members?
With the budget expression, did you want to move that up to the item number five, staff of the commission rating?
I think that works.
Okay, great.
The hope is to get that done before our break at eight thirty while people are all still fresh and able to process, take in and process information. And so with those changes, are people satisfied with the agenda? Hearing no objection, we will move forward to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. You are limited to five minutes in your comments or questions, and I will take comments either from people in the room or people who are online, anyone who wishes to proceed, plus indicate, raise your hand and either raise your hand physically or online, use your electronic hand so we can see you and we'll get started. Anthony. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. My name is Anthony Arapino. I live at Fourth Savin Street, Montpelier. I'm here tonight to talk about the Development Review Board, but not to talk about the qualifications of your two applicants tonight. Mr. Jolly and Elvira Dana. I am, however, very glad to see that the Development Review Board is getting additional members because they're sorely needed. For those people that don't know, at home, Development Review Board plays a critical role in the ability of our city to meet the housing challenge that is pressing and that is so often discussed at your meetings and is a central focus of the recently approved city plan. The Development Review Board plays a quasi judicial role. It is where the rights of people to use their property to add housing and other structures to our city's tax rolls are decided. It's a very important process and it is by statute and by the DRB's own adopted rules, subject to the rules of evidence. I have had the opportunity to watch a couple of the recent hearings of the DRB that are available on Orca Media's website. And as an attorney who works in the development field, I was very concerned by what I saw. I do want to make clear, I also do represent parties that are likely to be before the DRB. I'm here speaking on my own behalf. No one is paying me to be here tonight. I'm here out of my own concern. What concerned me is that I feel like the volunteers on the DRB who are doing an incredible community service by giving their time to doing this very hard job have not been given the training and the resources to implement their work in a way that is consistent with what the law requires and consistent with our goal of being a city that is sending a message to those that would help us with our housing prices that we are ready to be a fair place, that our process is going to be efficient and that our process is going to be predictable and consistent with the regulations. What I saw on the tape was that the commission was allowing anyone to get up and basically say just about anything, even things that had nothing to do with the regulations or the permits that were in question. I understand that it's hard to not give people their chance to have their say when there's development happening in their neighborhood. But oftentimes, what I heard was complaints about how the regulations apply to development in their neighborhood, and that's for the planning commission. That's not for the Development Review Board. I know there's no attorneys currently on the DRB and it's not a requirement that you should be an attorney. But the fact is that when you are asking volunteers to administer a process that affects the legal rights of people who are trying to add housing stock to our community, they need to understand the rules of evidence that they're supposed to apply, so they're not considering things that are completely irrelevant. And the commissioners need to understand where to draw the line about comments that are being made. I think there must be resources from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Or if we have to spend the money to have an outside law firm like the firms that often represent the city, do some training for the members of our DRB, it would be money well spent. Because if the city DRB is making decisions that are not based on the regulation, then people who want to develop their properties are going to appeal those decisions. They're probably going to win and it's going to cost the money, the city, a lot of extra money to defend those decisions. And if the developers do win, they've done so at great expense to themselves and great expense in time. And it's going to slow down development and reinforce the unfortunate perception that Montpelier is not a development friendly town. So this is not a criticism of any member of the DRB. This is not a criticism of the staff per se, but I do think it's gone on too long that this commission or this important board that has a very difficult job to do has not been given the training and resources to do its job well. And that is affecting our goals to have more housing in the city. So I would ask the city council and the city staff and management of the city to look into this. As we have new members coming onto the board, it's a great time to do some training to make sure that folks know what they're asked of, what they're signing up for, and that developers before the DRB are getting a fair shake. Appreciate your consideration of these views.
Thanks, Anthony. I appreciate those comments. Anybody else in the room? Steve.
Good evening, Steve Whitaker. I want to speak about Montpelier's broader housing and resilience needs because our choices in the next few months will shape the city for decades. Housing in Savin's pasture, for more than twenty years, Savin's has been the obvious site for new housing if the city's attention keeps drifting to other less ready projects. Savin's owners are prepared to move forward with senior housing, clustered homes, even a new campus for Turtle Island if the city cooperates. Accelerating savings is the fastest path to real homes on the ground. Even though I have more to say about Country Club Road, which is later on the agenda. The unhoused interim solutions. Meanwhile, our most vulnerable neighbors remain without safe shelter. Country Club Road property was used as brief winter shelter, then closed after two winters. One without a shower even. Before another winter arrives, we could have managed camping, hygiene trailers, workforce training happening there. Far enough away from the Turtle Island lease hold over where the barns and the garages are. That could that sufficient distance and the priority would be getting water and sewer from the southeast corner of country of the clubhouse out to that bank of garages. These aren't abstract ideas. These are low cost, practical steps that dozens of cities already use. The resilience depot. Montpelier also needs an upland resilience depot, a place to store emergency food, cots, partitions, communications gear, backup dispatch facilities. If downtown floods again, the recovery and resilience commission recommended preparing upland sites. Country Club Road is an obvious location, but it needs planning now, not after the next disaster. Funding readiness. There's more than fifty million available statewide in disaster recovery block grants. Some of that money can fund planning. Some can funnel, bunch shovel ready resilience and housing projects, but to compete successfully, Montpelier must demonstrate foresight, not piecemeal spending. That means a master plan, a realistic sequencing of projects, incredible partnerships with state regional agencies. So I urge you to accelerate Savin's pasture, take immediate steps for the unhoused. Plan for a resilience depot, pursue funding strategically. Let's not repeat past mistakes. Let's make Montpelier stronger, safer and more equitable in the months ahead. And where this diverges from the path we're on most immediately is the idea of spending five to seven, pursuing five to seven million, which we likely won't get to raise Route Two and build that new highway, which is on the agenda. Versus cooperating with Savin's at getting a multi-use path from Savin's up through the island that they are willing to accept versus a twenty-four foot road. And a multi-use path engineered to support an emergency use fire truck or ambulance getting through a second egress into Country Club Road. So that would serve the recreational needs of the public. It would provide a bicycle, electric bike, cart, stroller and emergency egress for vehicles. And long term, when there's housing up there, that same twelve foot engineered paved, multi-use path could support an electric shuttle to town to keep people shopping downtown. So that should be our priority for planning because it both accelerates a second safety egress for Country Club Road. It accelerates Savin's pasture development and it promotes resiliency in diverse rooted communications if we put dispatch out there in the next flood. So I've got more details on that should you feel free to ask.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else in the room? Online, I see Therese Majau. Welcome.
Hey, Jack. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm not know how to lower my hand. Sorry. I'll figure it out later. I am coming to speak to the council this evening as the president of the Board of Trustees for the T W Wood Gallery. On October third, we are celebrating our one hundred and thirtieth anniversary. And we are the oldest art museum in Vermont, right here in Montpelier. And we were established in eighteen ninety-five by Montpelier native, Thomas Waterman Wood, who established it for the benefit of his fellow citizens. For a hundred and thirty years, we have conserved two historic art collections. We have, we exhibit and promote local artists. And we have, and we provide life-affirming arts education for Montpelierites and Central Vermonters of all ages. And I have sent in emails inviting all these members of the city council to join us in our celebration on October third at our gallery at forty-six Berry Street. And I encourage all of you to come, as well as members of the community, to join us for a hundred and thirty years of promoting and celebrating art and community. Thank you.
Thanks, Therese. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no other requests either online or in person, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Go move. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Now we're moving to item six, the hillside waverly stairs.
So just to tee this up in your packet, there are a couple of options. We were notified that the stairs within the packet here were in disrepair and really unsafe. And so we've taken a look at them and have come up with some options. Chris Lombra is going to run you through those options and take on it.
Great.
Good evening, Chris Lombra, Sustainability Facilities Coordinator. But as Kelly said, it came to our attention that the stairs there were in pretty bad condition. They were inspected by several staff members, public safety, public workers. City manager's office and found to be in rough shape. Loose railings, boards that weren't attached at all. A lot of splitting, a lot of failed passengers. Kind of foundations that shifted a little bit. So we closed them and quickly learned that these are really important artery to connect health neighborhoods downtown. So knowing that, we're trying to escalate, making repairs to this and getting it back in service and coming up with a good long-term solution. So in front of you, you have the three options that we looked at. Option one being temporary repair of stairs. And given, given the condition of the stairs, we think that this is probably good for a year or so. And after that, we'd need additional work. Cost is about six thousand dollars and this could be, we shuffle money around and find a way, pay for it, we can get this done very quickly. Then put the stairs back in service to get us through the winter. Two other options would be budgeted for in FY twenty-seven. And kind of a matter of choice as to which of these people want. And I think a recommendation really is going to be that we make the temporary repairs and then deliver a little more on the permanent solution. But outlined in front of you, we've done a little bit of homework and they give cost about fifty-five thousand dollars to rebuild and replace the stairs as they exist. And that, there's an assumption in there that isn't listed, I apologize. So that's assuming that the existing years and support this thing can be reused. There would be additional cost. A few hundred dollars a piece to replace up here, that need to be replaced on top of the fifty-five that's estimated right now. And what's listed as option three is to replace the wood frame stairs with a stair that's attached to and parallel to the retaining wall at the top. And that would have graded, graded steel treads. So snow and ice could fall through and it wouldn't require as much maintenance as, as happens now. The existing stairs, for in case anyone doesn't know, are solid, solid surface wood. Really, every time a chipper or street foreman, every time it snowed, we have, we have people up there straightening things off by hand, shoveling and salping them. The salt obviously rusts the steel fasteners that hold it all together. Creates, creates maintenance issues. So the graded treads are, in our opinion, an upgrade for that. From the base of the retaining wall down to the top of Hillside Avenue, parks, parks would use the youth conservation corps labor to build granite steps, steps on grade. Because they're on grade, they would require railings. If you will, something where that way railings could be added if they were determined necessary for safety, that type of thing. And the cost of that is estimated at about forty thousand dollars. And we think that that would last longer. Would let us make some existing configuration, rebuild new materials. And I also did speak with Dan Perry, our street foreman, about maintenance concerns with that, and he thought that that would lessen, it would alleviate. We'd still have to get up there and do handwork, but it would be slightly easier to maintain. So at this point, recommendation really is to, you know, find six thousand dollars to repair these stairs as is. Options things really kind of develop pretty quickly and like have a little more time to do more work on it.
So you're not looking for a decision for the long-term replacement now? What you're basically looking for is approval to do the repair this fall, you know, before winter comes on?
Exactly right.
Yeah.
That's the one who first looked at them. I'm ready to make a motion to, let's do the temporary repair of these existing stairs and railings and find the funds.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So you would, you would then in the before. Thank you. Before or during budget season, you would then come up with something so, because we're going to have the budget for this, right? So you'd have a plan with specs and so on.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Counsel, anything else? All right.
I have one question.
Yes. Thanks so much for like working hard to come up with a temporary solution that can connect, you know, back to the neighborhood. I'm wondering how we can prevent this kind of thing from happening in the future in terms of like, it gets to a crisis point of failure on a piece of infrastructure like that. And, you know, do we have a system through which we, you know, review city assets like this in a way to? I mean, that didn't happen overnight, right? And just curious about like how we're making sure we're tracking these things.
We do have a capital needs assessment for buildings and a piece of infrastructure, but to be honest, I don't believe these stairs ever appeared on that. That document and it's.
Yeah.
But they've been repaired as, as reported by the neighborhood residents over the years. These, these have been in place since the nineteen eighties, right? They've been around forever. And I guess when, when we rebuild with something new, then that there's our opportunity to kind of tell everybody away every year and keep some capital planning. Be ready to take care of these things.
Thanks, Ben. Ben Huffman.
I would like to suggest that you, before you vote, you give an opportunity to others, myself and others who I believe have comments they'd like to make. For myself, I have lived in my home on Close Street prior to the construction of the current steps, which I believe were, was, were constructed in the late seventies. So that's been a pretty long run, forty-five years. And I've used those stairs countless times and as someone interested myself in construction and building, I've taken pretty close notice of the stairs over the years and I think one of the basic failings of these has been the posts that were just referred to, the concrete piers that go down a certain distance and the wood supports have attached to those. Those are, I don't know how many there are, but there've got to be, I would say, I don't know, six or so. And they, of course, are all independent of one another structurally. And over the years, what's happened is that the earth surrounding those posts has shifted in diverse ways and the effect of that has been to cause a twisting of the stairs and accelerating boards coming loose, et cetera. So I think the first thing I would like to note is even though you're not going to vote tonight on a a particular solution, since the city parties involved are promoting what's called option three, I just want to draw attention to the fact that really that is probably the poorest approach, in my opinion. One being that the old curb pieces that are to be used for the steps. They, they will have the same shifting in an inconsistent manner. And I think that's inviting more trouble. The second point that is really primary, in my opinion, is that any stairs to be safely used and not cause trouble, they need to be uniform in every respect of the treads and risers. And particularly if you're changing an entirely different material and structural form, it's just going to introduce greater risk for people tripping or not realizing that they've they're not walking in the same manner that they had been. So in my opinion, there really needs to be some more careful attention applied to designing something that is a much better permanent fix.
Thanks, Ben. That is your time, but thanks. I, I think those are all points well taken.
I do have one other short point, if I may.
Well, we're, we're, yeah, go ahead, Barry, if you can make it very quickly.
I've done some investigation into possibilities and one that I've looked into is a steel setup, which would be the same as you might find in any commercial or industrial setting. And steel is a much better material than wood for something like this. And it could be done according to, of my guesstimate on dimensions for somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. Now, in addition to that, would be the labor of putting it together and the cement work to create proper footings.
Great. I think I'll cut you there, Ben, and thank you for that. I, I hope you're in contact as we develop the long range plan. Anybody else? Steve.
I really appreciated Ben's comment because what I find is I go around and take photos of all these, these problems, the failing infrastructure. The problem I see now is that we're putting in new mistakes. So for every project we embark upon, we create two more projects that are never postponed, indefinitely postponed and never budgeted. So if we're going to capital budget repairs of these things, the maintenance, the maintenance staff and the budgeting has to get down to the level of we just put in a new sidewalk but left the curb an inch and a half higher than the sidewalk right at School Street. So anybody walking School Street and crossing trips over that inch and a half high granite curb. We just put in, we just paved in front of Bear Pond Books. There's two inches of standing water and people walking diagonally to get on where they don't have to walk two inches of water. These are brand new paving jobs that should be under warranty. And what we don't have is the oversight to make sure we get our money's worth and get it done right the first time, instead of creating two more projects out of every one we attempt. projects out of every one we attempt. So there's a real dysfunction in the way we are conducting our infrastructure maintenance and it's costing us dearly.
Thank you. Folks, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to, uh, do the immediate repair this fall and work on plans for the future, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Thank you. Next up, we have item seven, a follow-up. Kelly, I assume that's you or Ben?
Uh, yes, so we actually do have members, um, from the hub, um, if they'd like to come up, um. Uh, and so just to take this up, uh, so in your packet, uh, we do have uh, two of the three lease documents back in front of you. Um, just a reminder, uh, from last time, uh, what we put back to the hub, um, in terms of agreement would be that for the phase one lease agreement, which would be the building itself, um, there would be, uh, the same terms as what Turtle Island has, but with, um, sort of the potential for a five-year sentence. Um, with, you know, sort of renewal language that would be automatic. So that was added in, um, generally in can speak to this, they're in agreement with that adjustment. Um, the second piece was for a ground lease, um, and so it was an option for an eight or and a half. Uh, we proposed back to them a three-year term. Um, with financing, uh, they have countered back with five years plus an additional two. Um, so that's where we stand right now. There was a third document that was not included in this, and that was the terms of that ground lease. Um, and so here within the packet, we do have the details, um, but there was an offer on the table um, for a thirty-year ground lease, um, would be option renewal based on mutual agreement. Um, and so we don't have that for you tonight. Um, there are still some, um, items to discuss around the surety bond. Um, but with that, I, um, might just turn it over to the hub if they've got a few comments to look at. There was also, um, two memos that were included in your packet from the hub. And, uh, and take it from there.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we don't have a presentation to make tonight.
I'll just start by asking you to introduce yourselves.
I'm sorry, Ned Winthrop, uh, Chair of the Hub Board. Um, the main, there are a couple of things we're looking for tonight before we can present, uh, our newest revised draft of the land lease. Uh, the first and the most important one is that, uh, we get some sort of indication from you, the council, as to whether, uh, you are open to a compromise, as Kelly described it, uh, on the term of the option agreement. Um, four weeks ago, you came back and, um, suggested we only needed three years uh, to put together financing for what we hope will be our four million dollar sports barn. Um, we contend that that is just in a, uh, an inadequate timeframe for us to put together the package, which includes, uh, private fundraising, um, loans from banks and probably also the Vermont Community Loan Fund and perhaps VIDA. Uh, and then the third leg of our stool would be some sort of federal grant. And we are virtually certain that uh, we will not be able to get a federal grant within three years. Uh, so we're asking for a minimum of five years um, for the option agreement to enter into the lease. If we can't put together the, uh, financing package, then we would not exercise the option. Uh, and, uh, the land would be once again available uh, for the city to do with it as you will. Um, we're pretty confident that, uh, nothing else is likely to happen on that one and a half acres over the next five, year, five years. Uh, unless it's to create another soccer field or another outdoor playing field. So we don't think to answer your, uh, concern, Ben, about, um, you know, the opportunity cost. I forget exactly what you call it. Uh, we don't think there is a significant cost to the city in terms of the opportunity loss. In fact, we think that this opportunity, which we first brought to the city four years ago, uh, is one that the city hopefully will embrace. That we will, uh, provide, uh, primarily indoor recreation. And the other thing we made clear in our memo to you that is part of your packet is that unless we can get, um, uh, unless we can agree on a compromise, namely a minimum of five years for the option, um, the hub is not, uh, interested in pursuing the building lease, which is for virtual sports or simulated sports, which again, we think will create a lot of, uh, public interest in activity, uh, if we are able to go forward. I'm talking about especially the next five years before we would be, I mean, it could be a shorter term than that, uh, when we would exercise the option. Uh, and Ben, I know you, uh, voiced the opinion that we could probably put together the financing package in three years. Yes, that's possible. But, uh, we, the, the board has met about this and discussed it at length. And we think, uh, it's quite unlikely. So if you stick to the three-year, uh, condition that was embedded in your motion three years ago, uh, we think four weeks ago, I'm sorry, uh, that that would be the end of this whole four-year-long process and we very reluctantly have to walk away and look for a, another site, but basically start from scratch. So we implore you to, at the very least, consider that one compromise out of the three or four conditions that you presented or Kelly presented, the fourth one, which she paraphrased a few minutes ago about the building lease and either party having the option to uh, back out of that agreement, which we are fine with. Um, so there were four uh, suggested amendments or conditions that have been presented. And we are confident that we can, uh, reach agreement on the fourth, which has to do with minimizing the uh, city's risk by, uh, virtue of a surety bond or some comparable, uh, mechanism. Um, but, uh, well, we can address that, uh, if, if you have questions about why, uh, we didn't present that. We didn't present, uh, an amended ground lease or land lease in advance of this meeting. Uh, basically it's because there's a lot of confusion on, on our side, including our real estate lawyer is very confused in terms of, uh, exactly what that would look like.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let me see if there's any questions from members of the council. Because we could just, that this would be an appropriate thing to go into executive session if someone, if no one has any questions. So entertain a motion to go into executive. Well, uh, I'm going to see if there's anything from the members of the council. Okay, Steve, I'll take a comment.
I want to speak tonight about the proposed hub lease at Country Club. I'm not opposed to recreational uses up there, but I urge you to slow down and make sure the lease aligns with the city's larger obligations for this site. You have obligations to the public that are, uh, not well articulated and not well uh, designed for. The lease should not pre-commit the city to site conditions that block the emerging priorities of a resilience depot, multi-use emergency path, future utility extensions. A master plan coordination clause should be added to the lease, making clear that the city can relocate or reconfigure leased areas if the Country Club road plan demands it. The second, the city should, must retain a clear termination for convenience right with at least ninety days' notice. Without that, we risk being locked into a contract that limits our ability to adapt to flood resilience projects or to provide housing. Third, the lease provides below-market access. That's acceptable only if the hub delivers measurable community benefits. Use scholarships, open gym hours, low, low-income access and reports back quarterly. Otherwise, monthly, your taxpayers are subsidizing a private operation without accountability. Fourth, traffic and safety cannot be ignored. Turtle Island daycare already generates peak drop-offs. That the hub adds simultaneous waves of parents. We need firm parking, lighting and noise management requirements in the lease, along with winter operations planned for no, snow and ice. Finally, the city must be fully protected on liability. Hub should carry commercial general liability coverage and name the city as an additional insured and indemnify the city broadly. In short, the lease is premature unless these conditions are added. Without them, we risk spending public resources in a way that undercuts both our resilience goals and our long-term housing strategy. I urge you to approve the lease only subject to safeguards. And I, what, the first thing that comes to mind is we could be devaluing every lot that we propose to sell to first-time homeowners by having to suffer pickleball noise incessantly. You know, I don't think we've calculated in the benefit to the sports club of the housing contingent or the root negative impact on the saleability and livability of those units. Uh, this is where a master plan is essential and so far we've met nothing but resistance to that.
Thank you. Council members, anything? And does anyone want to make a motion to go into executive session? Or what's your pleasure? Okay, and that would be a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one DSA, section three thirteen A two regarding the, uh, negotiation of, uh, uh, lease purchase or real estate, uh, lease option or real estate purchase. Is, uh, did someone, Harry, did you second it? Or someone, someone second that?
Second.
Any discussion? All of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's just go ahead and start.
Jack, right on the score, next door?
Yeah.
So just a bit of background, as we've in central Vermont served nearly 40 years now, operating three shelters over these years, Berry City, Berry Town, Berlin, and in Montpelier over these last several years have operated in a winter overflow. And that has most recently been at the Elks property. So last year, with combined support from the city of Montpelier and state partners, we were also able to operate a day warming space in collaboration with volunteers on the community table. And we also have community outreach and street outreach teams, which you know, we have two staff that focus on the bulk of their time in Montpelier in particular. And that program, that team has been possible due to a lot of support by the city over time. So while the funding source is no longer available, now we're really deeply grateful for the Montpelier Community Foundation who continues to support that outreach work. The need for the safe and year-round emergency shelter remains really high in Montpelier and this whole region. And the turret house expands Good Sam's year-round capacity. So I hope that will be a really meaningful impact for the unsheltered in the coming months and years. So just a bit of several key facts, which I think we've shared, but just for the community to be aware of. The turret house will be located on Berry Street, just up the road from here. It will serve adults age 18 and above, 80-plus, who can live independently. We'll operate the site 24/7, 365 days a year. We'll provide case management, housing navigation, benefit support, recovery support, overall wellness, in addition to our to our emergency housing provision. So the goal is always to help our guests to get into permanent housing to the next step in their, their own personal goals. The timeline is that this past week, we officially closed on the property, so we purchased the property. And so that is a big point of celebration, a big phase one of our process. The renovations for the property will begin in October. And we anticipate as soon as we possibly can to occupy the building formally. Likely that is early 2026. So we'll keep folks posted as we know the timeline officially for the scope of that work that we'll be doing. So the next steps that we will be engaging in over these next couple of months are beginning some direct outreach in the community, connecting with our neighbors, listening to folks, hearing what is of interest to them, curiosities, concerns, questions that we can answer. We'll have some open houses at the site so folks can see what it looks like and what it will be aspiring to look like soon. Some office hours and drop-in visits and things like that we'll make available. The shelter, once it's open, will be staffed 24/7. Every day of the year, we'll have, you know, our typical safety plans and processes and all season procedures that work with our, you know, within our program here as well as everywhere else in the region. We'll continue all of our ongoing coordination with city staff, public safety, local service partners, and so on. And just work to integrate into, you know, a year-round fashion that we haven't had that opportunity to do in the past. We're really excited about that. So we'll keep you all informed as things go along. Just really wanted to give you the, give you the latest on that and to celebrate that, to raise that up as a, you know, investment in the community as a way to really build in more stabilization for our most vulnerable neighbors. So we'll be going to that. Thank you. If there are any questions, please don't put it to me.
Yeah, Jim.
Are you still looking at maybe a January 1st start up?
It depends how quickly we can get our construction to occur. My sense is that it will be beyond January 1st, yeah, at this point.
Well, thank you for being on it and welcome to the city.
Anybody else? So.
Congratulations. I know you've been trying to do this for a long time. It's great to have a year-round shelter so close. How, if at all, does this, does the operation of this facility differ from your other facilities? Anything that's unique about, about the way this will operate?
It doesn't differ necessarily. It's a pretty typical semi-congregate shelter. It mirrors quite closely our flagship shelter in Berry City, which is a very similar footprint and process of how we serve the community there. So the 18 beds are also bunk beds in bedrooms on the second floor, the same as our other shelter is. So that model is something that we're very familiar with and that we run as a, you know, has been going, going strong for almost 40 years. So that's pretty much what it would look like.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you so much for the, it's really important work and we're really glad to have you as a neighbor. I also was just wondering if you could talk about who are the state partners that are supporting this?
Yeah, sure. So we have the Office of Economic Opportunity, which is our key funder for shelter operations in the state of Vermont. The state has shelter capacity funds that have been allocated over the last couple of years. And so this money is part of that set of funds, most of the money. That is one of our main funding sources for this, as well as some very generous family foundations and individual donors making it possible with collaboration, underwriting coordination, as well as project partnership with Vermont Housing Conservation Board and Evernorth. And so we've got an incredible local team of, of partners that are working on this as well.
Thanks, Julie. This is great, great news. I'm looking forward to to the day that you are able to open up. It's, it's been many years that, that this has been something missing in Montpelier. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Steve.
Steve, what a good, I, I think that what we're seeing is a failure of our own planning, our homelessness task force. Congregate shelters are sold yesterday and to the mental health crisis we see among many of the unhoused has directly to do with the lack of privacy. And with that, we're still on the bridges of a pandemic, a congregant shelter should have been out of the question. And yet we had no plan to even guide the pursuit of this property or the pursuit of a shelter here. But the, the staffing, the intrusion, the, you could say, Good Samaritan looks out for the homeless like the Israelis look out for the Gazans, you know? That's, we, we do not have a dignified system at all to, to care for the unhoused. This, this is an oppressive invasive business model. And Rick DeAngelis as much as admitted that, very paternalistic, very patronizing, very dominating, dominating these folks' lives. That is not a ladder up. That is not giving people the dignity and the privacy they need to put their own headspace together and their own next goals and steps. So I think we can and should do far better. And to be calling this a big step when it's only eighteen beds, when we've got a hundred people out on the street right now, is really folly, you know? It's, it's a tragedy of the highest order that we can't seem to, we can't even ask the folks that we've given substantial money to, to come up with a plan for how we should care for the folks that won't fit into this shelter. So I don't have all the answers. I've made suggestions. I think we're going to have to resort to soft shelter managed camping in order to accommodate this emergency, but we're not even seem to be making any steps towards that. So I just think we're patting ourselves on the back here with a very false and negligent framework as we go into winter. I mean, to have us, you know, a shelter that's not going to open until January, if then, while these people are out on the street, it's an emergency that y'all should be putting, you know, higher than a, a crickety stairway, you know?
All right. Thanks for coming in. Next, we're to item nine, reinstatement of the Public Arts Commission.
So that was due, we reviewed our distinct structure. And the Public Arts Mission was put on hold at that time. We have currently been evaluating Public Arts Mission and kind of trying to determine, you know, what the funding structure was like, what some of the projects might look like. And actually this week, we had a meeting regarding the twelve sixteen State Street Lot, Main Street Lot, and also Confluence Park. And we were talking about some public art installations. And we really came to realize that, you know, we should have the Public Arts Commission. So this item is before you tonight to reinstate the Public Arts Commission and to have them continue with their work along with their seven members. And so we would, if reconstituted, go ahead and keep the existing members and then any ones up for renewal, or if we need to do some recruitment, we would go ahead and launch that effort. But really what we're looking for also in addition to getting the Arts Mission back up and running officially is to develop recommendations for a temporary public art installation at twelve sixteen Main Street. I'm just really beautify that lot, especially as we're working on development. And then also to consider the feasibility of an installation at Confluence Park as well. So to really kind of take these spaces and locations and start to try to beautify them and do something good with them. So I hope that you'll take that under consideration and would take a motion or two.
Thanks, Kelly. The question I have is one of the reasons that we've been pausing or eliminating some of these commissions is because of staff capacity. And so could you comment on that?
Yeah. So I think with the Arts Mission, we actually do have, we are limited. But I will say that the person that would staff this committee is now on board. And so we'd be able to do that.
Great. Jim?
That was gonna be my question.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the request?
So. So.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks. All right. Next up, we're, we're right on time. Sarah, come on up. Budget workshop.
So while Sarah's getting started here, she has a pretty comprehensive presentation for you tonight. And so what we're going to be reviewing is sort of the anatomy of the budget. So going over FY twenty-six, giving you some of the details for FY twenty-seven and then seeking some feedback from you in terms of, you know, what you might like to see in budget development. So I mean, it's no secret that we are limited in terms of the funding that we have. But I do think that we have an opportunity here to take a look at, you know, what we're doing, how we're doing it. And to kind of focus on the things that we want to invest in. And so we have just approved a new strategic plan, which includes housing, infrastructure and economic development. And so I, I do anticipate that those items will be front and center in this budget process. But as we sort of get into this, we want to make sure that we're able to provide as much information as possible, but in a way that is accessible and that provides context for future decisions. So we're excited to share this with you. We're hoping that it'll be a good start to some really valuable discussions. And then following this item, we will have three workshops that will focus on areas of the budget. And so we can go over that a little bit in depth a little bit later. So as you're going through this, please be thinking about what you'd like to see. We'd like to kind of start there and maybe frame this in a way of what's possible. So Sarah's getting her presentation here. And it's, it's a great presentation. I also want to say that there are items in, in this presentation that you'll be able to use as tools throughout the process. We did dust these off to make sure that you have them in advance. You know, while I do want to kind of take a positive look at the budget, I also do want to note that, you know, this, we do have our work cut out for us this year. It's no different than any other year. So I know that it's going to be tough, but I also am really excited about what's next and what we can do. So with that, I'm going to have Sarah take it away. And maybe we could dim the lights too, so we get the full effect.
Hi, I'm Sarah LaCroy, the Finance Director. I'm sorry we had to turn the lights off. This is a thirty-two slide presentation and finance is not the most riveting topic, so please bear with me. There are no fun pictures and graphics, so I'm sorry. But I do think this is really important, you know, as we head into the budget season, just to, to go back through what's in twenty-six, what goes into a budget in general for municipal budgeting and take a quick preview at twenty-seven and give you guys some things to think about and chew on and come back with questions that will help us move through and make this a very successful budget season. So with that, I just mentioned we'll do Municipal Budgeting one oh one. We'll go through the FY twenty-six budgets, high level, what's in there, and then take you through twenty-seven and ask for some guidance. So here, municipal budgeting at its core. Governments make program and service decisions that allocate scarce resources to programs and services through the budget process. As a result, the budget process is one of the most important activities undertaken by governments. The budget process consists of activities that encompass the development, implementation and evaluation of a plan for the provision of services and capital assets. The mission of a budget process is to help decision makers make informed choices about the provisions of services and capital assets and to promote stakeholder participation in that process. And so I want to take through, you through a few things about municipal budgeting because it is a very complicated process and there's a lot that goes into it. First, the purpose of the municipal budget is to serve as the city's financial plan for the year. It aligns resources with community priorities and provides accountability and transparency to the taxpayers. Some of the key principles that go into municipal budgeting are a balanced budget, transparency, accountability, long-term perspective and linkage to organizational goals like our strategic plan. It's important to have a balanced budget so that your revenues meet or exceed expenditures. If it's unbalanced, then your goal would be to build a surplus so that you can grow fund balance. There's also the opportunity to balance it, or excuse me, to operate at a deficit, which would be to use prior unbalance, which I would never, ever recommend. So just to be clear, I just figured I should call that out. But that could reduce the tax rate if you utilized fund balance, which again, I don't recommend. And so as we move ahead, our budget process includes planning and forecasting, the assessed revenues, expenditures and long-term needs. We then make requests of departments. The departments will submit their proposed budgets that include, you know, current operating needs along with futuristic and innovative ways that we can move the city forward at a cost that's reasonable. Then I will compile and balance a draft budget. And what that looks like is I take, it'll be different this year because we don't have the ClearGov platform, so it will be more manual than it has been. But departments will get a copy of their budget with the last five years worth of data to review. And so they'll make submissions and I will put together the budget and then balance the needs of what they have with what that could look like for an increased tax revenue and, and kind of see where we land. We also will review and deliberate. We'll have several council work sessions. The city manager, myself and department heads will all meet and review proposed budgets and talk about the highest needs. And then there will be public hearings. The next thing that will happen is that you will adopt a budget. That'll be in January. It has to be forty days in advance of town meeting, so no later than January twenty-second, we will need to adopt this budget. And then there will be implementation and monitoring, which is after the budget season is all over and we get into the new fiscal year. Revenues and expenditures will be tracked against the budget and you guys will receive monthly reports with quarterly detailed memos. So there are three different, main different budget types that we work through. The operating budget, which is your day-to-day services, that's going to be the general fund where you see fire, police, public works and administration. You also have operating budgets in water, sewer, parking and the district heat funds. In those funds, you'll also see capital budgeting, because they're a different type of fund, which I'll talk about in a minute. We also have a capital budget that looks at long-term investments in infrastructure, equipment and facilities. Our capital fund is funded through a general fund appropriation and is reviewed by the capital committee. We also have special revenue funds, which have restricted sources or are set aside, like our parks, recreation, senior center and cemetery fund that are specifically allocated that way. We have other, several other funds, but they're not funds that are budgeted for, that are also special revenue funds, such as grants funds and FEMA funds. So next I want to talk about revenue and then expenses. There's been a lot of talk about the source of revenue and finding additional revenue. That's a tough proposition in a municipality because we really are extremely limited in our avenues at which we can gain additional revenue. And so our largest revenue source is obviously property taxes. That is the main source of revenue for any municipality. We also receive state and federal aid through grants, pilot money, payment and move taxes and highway state aid. We also are able to collect the one percent local options tax, which is a huge benefit to the city. We already are collecting meals and rooms and we just started collecting sales, so I'm optimistic that that will bring a boost to our revenue. In addition, we'll have charges for services. Those are mostly in the enterprise funds because they're built on fees. Some of those are in recreation, the senior center as well, through program and membership fees. And then there's other revenue. The main sources of other revenue are licenses, permits, investment earnings and donations. And how I budget for those or we budget for those is based on historical trends, known rates based on what we need to raise in a property tax levy or in a water and sewer fee. We also factor in economic and demographic changes and only budget for one-time or restricted funds if we know they're going to be received and if they're going to be received in that respect. So next is the expenses. You know, we have a lot of expenditure types in our municipal budget, but in its core, it is personnel costs, operating costs, debt service and capital outlay. This is a similar approach as to revenue. You know, we look at current service levels based on prior year expenditures and then grow from there based on inflation and need. We'll adjust for known changes such as contract increases or wages and benefit increases, new debt service coming online or changing payments and utility costs. We also have planned equipment replacement for infrastructure projects and new programs or reductions approved by the council. So those are different aspects of estimating expenses and how we start to build this budget. And so finally, it is part of, you know, the municipal budget. There are two different main fund types. There is a third fiduciary, but not relevant for this conversation. So that's governmental funds and proprietary funds. And the main difference in those, which is really important, is that the governmental funds is primarily supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenue. It focuses on current financial resources and the funds we budget for, for those are the general fund, the parks fund, the recreation fund, senior center fund and cemetery fund. Then you have the proprietary or enterprise funds. Those are like business-type activities where you charge fees to recover costs and they are set up structurally, structurally different and they come from user fee bases. And for those, we have the water fund, the sewer fund, the parking fund and the district heat fund. So now I'm going to take you through what's in the FY twenty-six budget at a high level, so we can refamiliarize ourselves, you know, with what we went through last year and what that means. And so again, governmental funds, these are taxed and intergovernmentally funded primarily. And so you can see in the general fund budget, I have taken our FY twenty-six budget and condensed it down and to a high-level review of revenue. So you can see our property taxes that are for the general fund. I separated out the taxes that were related to the library, other agencies, which is the community fund and CVHHH and Montpelier a lot. You'll also see different categories for penalties and interests, the payment and move taxes. We have some transfer for administrative and equipment costs that come from the other funds and into the general fund. We have intergovernmental revenue, which, like I said, is grants, the highway state aid, capital fire mutual aid, ambulance revenues and local options tax. And so you can see the sixty-five percent of our budget is the general fund property tax revenue in, as far as sources of revenue. And then if you want to take a look at expenses, I have broken our expenses down by department category. So you'll see here the different amounts budgeted for each department and what that looks like as a percentage of that total general fund budget. Here you can see, like you would expect, that police operations, firing EMS and Department of Public Works hold the highest percentages within our expense categories. And I will post this presentation online and email it to all of you later this week or early next. So just that way it's available as a tool. And so here, I've continued this. You'll see back on this other slide, there is a transfers to other funds, this, this big number here, the two point two six four. And so this breaks that out a bit more. Within that, there are transfers to the senior center, parks, cemetery and the rec department, which are all tracked in a separate fund, but approved as part of the general fund overall. We also transfer funds out to a separate capital fund where we track the capital expenses separately. And then we have debt service, which is for the capital-related infrastructure and equipment that has been purchased in the past. Here, the capital fund budget, as I mentioned, we raised the funds to the general fund and transferred them out to a separate fund. Just a quick recap for twenty-six, the need was really high and we were not able to fund the whole need. But we did set a goal that was to do a two-cent increase method, which was one that was used previously. This continued due to financial constraint, but it was really successful back when that was started in FY fourteen at bolstering the capital fund budget, which allowed us to do more paving and improvement to infrastructure. And so this is, is what, you know, And so this is, is what, you know, we did a two hundred twenty thousand dollar increase last year, uh, which was slightly less than the two cents, but it was still incredibly helpful in growing that capital fund budget. Um, these twenty-seven and twenty-eight numbers are old. I'm still working to revisit and revise those. Um, so you will get those in future capital meetings and future budget discussions. And then just a brief um capital fund components. There's debt, service, infrastructure and equipment. You know, we had paving sidewalks, stormwater, um hybrid police cruisers, DPW trucks, sidewalk clouds, technology upgrades, all that made that last year's capital budget. And just a plug, we're having the capital committee meeting on um October first, so you know, it'll be a good time. So next I'll take you through some very high level of the parks fund, rec, senior center and cemetery. You'll see here, I was trying to illustrate the breakout of what, you know, they, what portion of their revenues are um property taxes versus other funds. Obviously, in the parks fund, um, there's not a lot of avenues to generate revenue uh aside from property taxes, so they'll be the heaviest weighted in in general fund property taxes. Um, but as you move to the rec fund, um, they're about sixty-five thirty-four, which is great. And so we just need to continue to find ways to bolster program revenues. That way, you know, we, there's less burden on the taxpayers. Um, and that same holds true for the senior center fund. As you can see, their property tax appropriation is only eighteen percent of their budgeted revenues. Um, so that, you know, their big fees are program membership um meal fees. Here with the cemetery budget, they're about sixty-three percent funded by property taxes, the rest is investment income and fees for lot sales and burials. So with that, that's the wrap of the governmental funds. And that takes us into the enterprise proprietary funds, which is really more like operating a business and the rules are quite a bit different. Um, so we really just are charging fees to recover costs and they're not funded um by property taxes. So here, um, we'll do the water fund first and I just uh want to be transparent. These are very brief, but we will be back in a future workshop um with one that's dedicated to the parking fund and the district heat fund and then a separate one that is dedicated to the water fund and the sewer fund so that we can take a deep dive and really look at what goes into these budgets and um make some, some tough policy decisions about how we move ahead, how we fund infrastructure and what those funds look like as we um move into the future. Oh, sorry, skip right over. Uh, so here you can see it's primarily charges for services um based on what we need to cover in that year to cover debt, administration, meters, the distribution system, supply and treatment, um, as well as capital infrastructure upgrades, which we'll get into more in-depth in a future workshop. Uh, the same rings true for the sewer fund. This is primarily funded by charges for service um based on, on you have that system. And so you have the some stormwater management in here, which we will in the future have to create a separate enterprise fund for stormwater. Uh, we just are not there with capacity at this current moment. And so that is also for, up for future discussion. Um, but you'll see there's administration and treatment and there's debt service mixed in based on uh related. Parking fund is also all charges for services. Um, the parking fund is struggling a bit because we've just not had the fucking we once did. And so we really need to reevaluate what that fund is and and what its future looks like. But here you can see, uh, we budgeted for charges for services for meters and permits and then for tickets. Um, and then that budget is made up of a small portion of DPW's parking and maintenance and then primarily parking enforcement. Next is the district heat fund, um, which you just approved rates for uh back in July or August, I think. And so this fund is made up of charges for services for both capacity and for energy. And then you'll see uh similar categories to water and sewer related to operation, administration, uh debt reserve and state contract costs. So that wraps up the enterprise funds. So just to take a look at FY twenty-six overall, um, we know that that budget season was incredibly difficult um and many hard decisions were made. We had reductions in force and reductions in service levels. Uh, we are almost two months into FY twenty-six and I am monitoring that budget versus actual very closely. We are experiencing higher inflationary pressures than were budgeted for. Um, I, I do want to say that we are collaborative and creative among departments, which is how we're able to curb some spending and and find solutions that um may be more cost-effective than than we had in the past, given our limited resources. You know, the perfect example is the Cliff Street stairs that Chris was just talking about. You know, we really DPW um facilities and parks really worked hard to come up with a good solution for that. And I think um it's showing growth in the city and that's really important. Um, also our cash flow is incredibly tight right now, um, given the high capital outlet, the flood recovery costs and low reserves, uh, which is also being monitored closely. Um, there were uh some very promising things though in twenty-six. We got the one percent local option sales tax approved and that was approved with a seventy-four percent approval rating. Uh, the first payment for that should come in in November for the first three months of the year. So I am anxiously awaiting to see what that will look like so we can start to incorporate that into the budget season and and get that into the twenty-seven budget as well as come back to you with what we should do with what we've got in this year that's not currently budgeted. In addition, the fire truck bond passed with a seventy-two percent approval rating. And then for me, the most exciting thing is that the city budget passed, um, and that had an extremely high approval rating of eighty-three percent. Um, so that's, you know, very promising uh for what uh rate pairs feel about the city budget. So then this is available online, uh, really hard to see right here, um, but this is the tax rate comparison from twenty-five to twenty-six. The biggest takeaway is in that bottom right corner that's really hard to see where it says that the overall homestead tax rate between municipal and school over twenty-six went up point five percent. And so, you know, that was uh that was a really uh difficult task to me, I think, between municipal and the school. And so I think that that really helped rate pairs this year. Uh, so now we're on to FY twenty-seven. This fiscal year runs from July one twenty-six to June thirty twenty-seven. Um, and, and this is a, a timeline, so what we'll see in the upcoming months. In September, we, right now, we've got this budget workshop. I am gathering preliminary data based on trends, rate increases, you know, unfunded needs and working on capital fund planning. In October, we'll do additional budget workshops. I'll begin to build the twenty-seven budget, um, rolling twenty-six as a base and then using known factors and increases to to get that to a place where it's ready for department head review, um, and their own adjustments. Uh, we're hoping to gain insight into your priorities. We'll have capital committee meetings and then provide, um, I am hoping in the next meeting or the meeting after to provide a preliminary financial report. Um, it will be prior to the twenty-five audit completion, but they are here this week. Um, so I expect that after this week, um, and I don't expect that there will be any adjustments. I just would rather have a, a fresh set eyes look at it before I, I come back to you um with, with how we look. Um, once November gets here, again, we'll be doing more budget workshops. Departments will have to submit their budget requests to me. I will compile the full budget and then I will meet with um Kelly, the department heads, and we will bring that budget into alignment with the goals and targets we've heard from you through these budget workshops. Um, in December, you'll get the city manager's budget presentation. There'll be additional workshops and I'll incorporate any adjustments and requests you've made into that budget. Uh, once we get to January, hopefully we're just in the first and second public hearings portions, but there is opportunity for additional workshops if needed. We'll finalize the budget, approve the warning, do bond hearings, which may be applicable for twenty-seven. Uh, you'll also get an audit report presentation for twenty-five and a general fund fund balance update about where we sit compared to um our policy and historically. And then February, no budget meetings. And March, you'll have the town meeting uh day vote. And then thirty days after that, in April, if no one appeals, the budget will be locked for twenty-seven. There are some pressures on, on the budget right now, um, as we go into this build. Um, the COLA for twenty twenty-six will come out in October. That's not yet known. Um, but based on what I've read, that is expected to be uh somewhere between two and a half and three percent uh is what it's looking like. Our consumer price index for August um was two point nine percent. And for the northeast region was three point three percent. And we are experiencing, you know, at costs that are higher than that inflation rate in this area. Our health insurance um came back with a twenty-one point two percent increase uh for the first six months if we stay with our current plan. With likely an additional um ten percent minimum that will tack on for the second six months of that fiscal year. We are currently working hard with the broker on options to reduce that percentage increase. You know, our hope is to bring that in closer to ten percent, um, you know, which is, is a reasonable increase given what's going on with health insurance uh currently. We also have aging infrastructure and pent-up capital demand to continue flood recovery and reduce fund balance. Our policy threshold for fund balance is fifteen percent of general fund budgeted expenditures. We are at, at June thirty twenty twenty-four, we were only at about six percent of this. And so, um, that adds to some of the uh cash flow uncertainty, um, not having of the built-up reserves. The fifteen percent is, is a good model policy. It's a tough policy to reach. But in my opinion, you know, to have in reserves, you really should have two months' worth of cash flow in reserves. And fifteen percent is not quite enough um for that. Uh, six percent is definitely not enough for that. So then uh FY twenty-six, excuse me, seven budget strategic plan initiatives. Uh, we have housing, economic development and infrastructure as the plan initiative. As you can see, in the past two fiscal years, there was no funding in the budget for housing or economic development. Um, previously, there was around three hundred and ten thousand in that budget um related to those topics. So that is a, an additional pressure that will be on the budget to try to fit in costs related to the strategic plan and your initiatives. In addition, um, your other initiative is infrastructure. And so, um, you know, our goal is to hit steady state values, but obviously that can't happen in one year. And so we need to decide how much and how fast we want to grow the capital fund and um what the rates can support. So this will go online. This is a, a rough version of the budget calculator that you guys have seen before. What we've done here um is taken the FY twenty-six budget. I've updated the grand list value to be reflective of how we just set the tax rate. Um, and, and the way this tool works is um really neat because you can put in additions or reductions to that budget and see what the tax rate impact would be. And then you can adjust based on your home value to see um what that would drive your uh tax bill to um either up or down depending on how you wanted to adjust. So for example, with a twenty-two percent increase in health insurance, you would slot, you know, four hundred and ten thousand dollars into this, this um options cost here and see how that um played out. So I think this will be helpful as we work through budget development um and allow you guys to, to play and the public to play to see, you know, how that looks and how important uh different initiatives are to them uh based on their cost. And so based on the grand list, when we set the tax rate, um, one cent is a hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that's important to, to consider. And then this all get posted on the website next week, once I've fully vetted and make sure there's no um bugs or kinks in it. So then only two more slides. This one and one more, I promise. Uh, we are looking for guidance from you on the twenty-seven budget development. Things really to consider are service levels, expectations for maintaining, enhancing or adjusting service levels and delivery, programs and initiatives, identifying priority programs to sustain, expand or phase out. Strategic plan alignment, as we've just talked about. We want to ensure budget decision support, your adopting priorities. And then there are fiscal pressures. And just to acknowledge the environment shaping twenty-seven, there are difficulties operating within the twenty-six budget. We have rising personnel costs, debt service, utility and maintenance costs. We have a limited tax base and limited external revenue sources, though the sales tax will help with that. Um, it, it isn't enough to put the kind of dent, um, you know, we are looking for in revenue growth. We also have increasing community demands for municipal services and the fund balance requires growth to meet policy and age and um aid and cash flow stability. This really is our jumpstart into the twenty-seven budget season and we hope um getting in front of you early will be able to have impactful discussions and and get guidance so that we can build a budget that meets your expectations, community expectations, a strategic, strategic plan and is also fiscally responsible. And with that, um, my final slide is really uh council considerations and questions to ponder. Um, I don't necessarily think you'll have questions for me tonight and that's okay, but you know, uh, we brainstormed a few questions, things to consider as we work through this process, like should the city consider increasing the pavement budget in twenty-seven? Would council like staff to conduct a cost-benefit analysis comparing continued use of overtime versus adding staff, including identifying a point at which one option becomes more financially sustainable? What level of investment would you envision in supporting housing development and to make it easier to build? Should staff revisit fee structures as a potential mechanism to generate additional revenue? What target level of reserves does a council consider appropriate for a rainy day fund? And how much investment should the city prioritize in resiliency initiatives? And so those are just a handful of, of off-the-top questions that come to me when I start thinking about budgeting. And so I imagine you guys will have many as we work through this process. And I just want to make sure we keep the questions and the guidance at the forefront as we build a budget um and work together to get one that's um good to go in front of voters. And with that, we should turn the lights on so people don't fall asleep.
Thanks, Sarah.
Sarah, that's not sleepy, but that's an excellent presentation.
This, this, this is a lot, yeah.
More like nightmarish.
So folks, this is a lot to take in. Um, I understand if people don't have questions for Sarah right now, but the floor is open if you do. Jim.
Um, do you have a figure on what we're in deficit?
Uh, the question is that.
Yeah.
So I don't want to give a number because I'm, I'm, we're still working through the audit, but I, I do want to say that um everything broke in our favor. Uh, we were able to um do a really good job pushing for delinquency collections, which um generated additional revenue related to penalties and interest and we didn't have the reduction um related to, to the revenue that we thought if we didn't collect those, um, we also had a reduction in how much we owed in education tax based on what we um abated in the prior year for flood, um, which is between about a hundred thousand dollars. And then uh our HRA utilization was low, so I think that we will end FY twenty-five at surplus, not in a deficit. Our ambulance rate increase helped significantly the projections. Uh, it came in higher than projections. So I do think that through uh, you know, spending freezes and departments, you know, holding from we were even with uh yachts stacked against us in some large cap, I expect that twenty-five will end in a surplus.
No, I'm really glad I asked that question.
Say it out loud. The auditors agree with me, but I, I do, um, it was looking really rough for a while. Um, and you know, everything broke in our favor and that was something the city really did.
Good job.
Anybody else? Hey, we have a couple of minutes and comments from the public. Make further questions from the public. Then you just see.
And then if anybody ever wants to come to my office and talk about budgeting, I am like, I'll hear for it. Ask me the hard questions. Well, I'm good to answer.
Great. Thanks a lot. We, I always really appreciate the, yeah, quality of the information you get, get to us because that's what we rely on to, to make these decisions.
I can attest your door is always open.
All right. Thank you. Um, let's see. Eight seventeen. Why don't we take our break now and come back at eight twenty-seven? And we can start in on the country club road. the country club road. I will uh call the meeting back to order. Folks. And we are up to item ten. Country Club Road Infrastructure Design Approval. Revisiting that, uh, thank you, Kurt.
Hey, Mike. Hello, I'm Kurt Monica, Director of Public Works. Uh, with me tonight is Mike Miller, Planning Director, and I believe also online is our um consultant VHB, um, from VHB is Evan Dietrich. Um, so I had to have a just a quick presentation that is the similar or the same as um the packet that we sent out to council. Um, just to give some visuals, there's a a question about providing some uh visuals to the alternative that we're proposing for the reconstruction of Country Club Road. Maybe dim the lights, thank you. Okay. So uh, we went through a number of alternatives, uh, this presentation is really the um focused on the recommended alternative. Um, which is um to uh adjust the grade of Country Club Road to twelve percent. Um, to elevate US Route Two at the intersection of Country Club Road to um improve the transition from the rail crossing. Uh, to center the road in the in the um right of way. Um, and to replace the utilities. Uh, so a visual of what the cross section of Country Club Road would look like under this alternative. Um, proposing a five foot sidewalk, this is sort of looking up the hill uh from the base of Country Club. Um, so two ten foot travel lanes, a two foot shoulder uh along the sidewalk. And then a six foot uh bike lane uh on the uphill side. And then potentially um trees uh landscaping uh on the edges within the right of way. Uh, this is a cross section of what Route Two looks like currently, um, this is uh facing east. So if you were facing west, you'd actually see the uh the bike path which terminates at uh Country Club Road. So uh Route Two has two eleven foot lanes and two uh six foot shoulders. Um, so this is um an illustration of the construction limits associated with the elevation of Route Two. Um, so you can see where it's staying uh out of the rail uh right of way. Now, that's a whole um another process to try to uh do any work within the rail right of ways, um, that runs across Route Two. And uh, there is um, you know, some grading transitions within the existing driveways um that we'd need to tie into. But you know, the the limits of the of the impacts to Route Two are um, you know, a few hundred feet to sort of gradually uh elevate the road and then gradually come back down to meet the existing grades. And then this is um the impacts along uh Country Club Road associated with um the new streetscape as well as um the twelve percent uh grade adjustment. So the green is sort of the limits of grading and you can see um closely the 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 right of way is labeled. Um, and we are outside of the right of way in some areas, so uh we would need to um negotiate for um at least temporary slope rights uh to do this work and then um you know, some work to tie into the tractor supply driveway to to regrade that. So basically by adjusting the road grade, we do have a profile that we can show you the change on that. Um, we're we're dropping the elevation of Country Club Road through the midsection. Um, and so then that requires grading things back to get the the slope stabilized. And this is the profile, so the um upper dash line is uh the existing grade of Country Club uh Country Club Road. And the solid line down below is what we're proposing, so um, obviously at the two ends, it's it's meeting back into grade, but um, we're sort of taking a cut of a couple of feet out of the middle to uh maintain a consistent twelve percent all the way, so the road um is fairly close to twelve percent, but um sort of at the beginning and the end, um, it ends up being a little bit steeper. Or it is currently a little bit steeper, so we're taking that um that out. And um, so the the estimate, as I mentioned at the beginning, is um to reconstruct the road at twelve percent grade, center the streetscape within um the right of way. Uh, to raise Route Two to minimize the the grade break at the rail crossing on Country Country Club Road and to construct new water and sewer uh for the length of Country Club and then all the way um to the uh basically to um the river crossing next to the roundabout. So the total cost of all that work is uh approximately seven point two million dollars. And uh what we're proposing is um that this would be the basis uh for the DR grant application. And um the engineering that would um be required to get us up to ninety percent on the streetscape portion of the work that would be included in that grant application. Um, right now, the um the design work on the utilities is already under contract to get to ninety percent, so this would only pertain to the to the streetscape portion. And then maybe Mike can speak a little bit more to um to the grant and and the um timeline associated with it. No?
I think I think Kurt did a pretty good job summarizing the disaster recovery grant. Um, we still uh don't have confirmation, we're going to be working with the the state, but this was a project they've encouraged us to continue to move forward on um through um the developer, which we talked about at the last meeting and to continue um the project itself, which is the infrastructure need. Um, in order to put in an application for disaster recovery, um, which would be due uh in uh the end of December, uh would be the start of that application process. So because that's a hundred percent grant, uh what's important is we just need to know what we're applying for. Um, if we don't get grants, we can always reengineer and adjust plans later if we have to. But at this point, uh, if we're applying for a grant, uh, I think it makes sense for us to apply for what it is we think would be the best outcome for that project in the long run.
We'll put up the questions from council, public.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe we could turn the lights back on? Thanks, Evelyn. Ben?
The project that we catalyst grants going in for for NBR.
Yes, yeah, we will be trying for the catalyst grants as well, so if we got one, the catalyst grant isn't big enough to cover the entire cost, so if we got one, that would just reduce the amount of disaster recovery we would apply for at a later time.
So.
So uh, this work wouldn't begin until we we uh found out about the grant, is that that how it works or? We we would apply for the whatever we whatever plan we choose, we would wait to see whether we got the grant or not and then we would start the design work.
Yeah, that's correct on the streetscape portion, so the.
Yeah, let's correct on the streetscape portion, so the utility design is at 60%. Now we're under contract to get it to 90, so we'll complete that. Yes, that's accurate, streetscape.
And is there? Any reason, this all makes sense to me. Is there any reason that we should be conscious of for why this might not be the best approach? Which I, I trust you that it is, but are there countervailing factors that we should be thinking about?
So we're proposing to do most of almost the best improvements that we can. The only thing that we're not suggesting is that we reconstruct the road at 10% grade, which is current development standards. But the the grading impacts associated with that are pretty extensive, which is why we're not recommending that approach.
Yeah, I was trying to think about that and your, the bottom is pretty much the same place. The the top is the same place, so I guess you can reduce the grade by extending it, but other than that.
That's right, to get it to 10%, you'd have to do a lot more cutting sort of at the top.
Yep. Counsel, any other questions at this moment? Jim and then Paul.
I can't remember, does the power lines go up that road?
I'm not 100% sure, but no, that would be, you know, where the layout was. Evan may know the answer to that question he's on here.
Yeah, there's power lines near the bottom of the hill, and I think there's a pole up near the top, too. I don't know that the line is continuous, though.
Could you repeat that, please? You were kind of quiet.
Sure, there are, is a power pole down at the bottom near the railroad tracks. And there's another pole up at the top, but I don't think the line is continuous all the way up the hill. I think the one at the top is fed from somewhere to the east.
Great, thank you. Counsel, Helen.
So you said it will be?
Could you bring the mic closer to yourself? Sorry, sorry to keep bugging you on that.
No, no, I, okay, I think it's better. So you said it will be 100% grant funded? And if we don't get the grant, we can just like change the design, right? Or revise the design?
Yeah, at that point, we would probably, as we have with other East State Street and other projects, probably have a conversation about what re-engineering, I mean, we were still talking between a five and $7 million project for all the water and sewer to get up there.
So if we don't get the grant, how much will we pay from our city budget, $5 million?
It's there, there are a number of other options that are going to start coming into play. So we have the catalyst brand, which could be between $1 and $3 million. We have the disaster recovery, which is up to 10, but this is, this is seven. We also have the opportunity to use the the CHIP program as well. So if we had to, we could also wait until we have a developer and then build that cost into that. So rather, that that affects how much money we have to invest internally in the system. But it'll be a policy question for council, where do we want to then apply that? We may have to wait until we have CHIP approval to go through and use that funding for the infrastructure.
So if we have to wait, it will be still okay with the plan, right? Because after listening to Sarah's presentation, like we need to have paving and everything, right? Then if we want to spend five or more million here, I prefer spending that much money downtown and just like improve our infrastructure first. So as you were saying, if we don't get the funding, then we can just pause this. Or we can't because of the developers and everything.
Yeah, I think you're, you're on the mark with what you're saying, because this certainly isn't in any capital plan at this point. So there is no $5 million that's in a capital plan to go and say, well, if we don't get the grant, we'll bond for it. Now, that's not to say council doesn't have powers to do things, but that's just saying, it's not certainly not in any plane, certainly hasn't been in our plane. The planning department has moved forward with Country Club Road project with the intention of trying to have it pay for itself, whether it's through TIP or CHIP or grants. That has been our mission now. If we reach a point where it can't happen, that's one we'll have to come back to and say, you know, here's where we're at. It's going to require investment, this is what it's going to cost, we'll have to make a decision, a stop decision at that point. At this point, as I said, we're looking at putting this in the grant. We'll know, you know, in in the next four months, we'll be going through and talking to developers, see how much interest we have. We'll be putting in the Northern Borders Grant in October. This grant, if we are eligible and are able to put it in, this would go in in December, we'd hear about it in February. So we will know in six months really where where we stand about the infrastructure.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Adrian.
I was just looking at the map, and so can you just share, what is the, is there like a co-application or partnership with the state of Vermont? Since it does in, there's some interaction with Route 2, like what does that look like? Is that a risk or a positive?
Yeah, so Montpelier actually controls the right of way for Route 2. So we, you know, we can dig water lines, put pipes in without any authorization or permission from the state, even though it is a Class 1 highway. So understanding is that we can do this work as long as it meets all, you know, federal transportation codes. It's not a partnership per se, and we would certainly work with the state on it, but we don't necessarily need their authorization because the city basically owns the right of way in the area.
Joe?
Let me unmute, sorry, let me lower my hand. Sorry about that. I have a couple of questions, most from VHB and one from Mike. One of the questions I had, so how much are we raising Route 2? Is it between two and four feet to reach the level of the railroad grade? The other thing is what about drainage for the properties that are across the road, say the Agway and other stuff like that? What's your estimate on the right-of-way acquisition costs? And the question for Mike would be, what are the odds that we would get the grant?
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Yes, we are raising the grade of Route 2 roughly two and a half to three feet. And of course, it tapers back to zero at either end, but in the intersection of Country Club Road, it's a little under three feet. That doesn't take care of meeting the grade of the railroad, but it makes a great improvement there where the drivers coming down the hill or going up the hill would feel much less of a grade break as you cross the railroad tracks. The the budget that we've shared with the city does have $30,000 in right-of-way acquisition costs, which is pretty much a guess at this point. The right-of-way of Route 2 is quite wide, so we don't really expect right-of-way impacts along the Route 2 corridor. They would be mostly on the Country Club Road parcels. And the road is super elevated towards the railroad in that area, so it's banked towards the railroad. So we wouldn't expect any adverse drainage impacts to any of the adjacent properties. The water would drain to the west down to the river, and there would be stormwater treatment added, that sort of thing. But we wouldn't really see any kind of significant impact to any of the properties as far as stormwater.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Ben, were you raising your hand for a moment? Okay. Folks, anything else? Yeah, Steve.
Absent a master plan and absent a plan to mitigate our tenant, we have a tenant with Turtle Island up there. How do we propose all those parents and children going up and down this road while it's getting rebuilt? Unless we're going to do it on nights and weekends. I just think, I call it a folly, the VHB option to raise Route 2 and rebuild Country Club Road is being advanced without any consultation with VTRENs or the Regional Planning Commission. Regional staff have indicated they're unlikely to support raising Route 2. Our neighboring towns are concerned that we would think we could just go ahead and do this without consulting them on the impacts. This makes it a multimillion-dollar concept with little chance of approval, yet tens of thousands of Montpelier's limited planning dollars have already been spent on. That's a misuse of scarce resources. Smarter priorities, instead of chasing a road expansion that's unlikely to succeed right now, we should be focusing on what is feasible and fundable. The multi-use path with emergency access through savings, utility extensions that support both savings build-out and Country Club Road resilience uses. These are achievable with disaster recovery block grants, and they strengthen two housing sites at once, both Country Club and Savins. Recommendation is simple, pause the road option until after a master plan is completed and consultations with state and regional partners are settled. Put our energy into the multi-use path designed to support an emergency vehicle, a fire truck or an ambulance as egress. The fact that we've got a willingness from those owners to accept a multi-use path and not a road, yet our game plan appears to still intend on ramming a road down their throat. Resilience, put our energy into multi-use path resilience projects and housing that Montpelier can actually deliver. That's how we'll gain credibility with state funders and make real progress. This is not about saying no, it's about saying yes to the right priorities in the right order.
Thanks, Steve. Council members, anything else? Is there a motion? I think what we're looking for here is a motion to approve the proposal for A.
I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the recommendation for option B.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks very much. Thanks, Mike and Kurt. Kurt, I think you're probably staying here because we're up to state and Elm always stuff analysis. Well, you have visuals for this, should we be?
No, it's just pulling up my notes here.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all know what the intersection looks like.
Yeah. Okay. Again, Kurt Monica, Director of Public Works. So as part of our construction project on State Street last year, to improve the safety of the intersection was while it was a one-lane road, we installed stop signs at the intersection of State Street and Elm Street. And that was intended at first to be a temporary measure. I've received quite a, quite a bit of feedback from the public in support of the change and interest in keeping them as a permanent stopped intersection, four-way or all-way stopped intersection. And within the city's ordinances, permanent stop signs really need to be approved by the city council. So tonight, just want to present the impacts of those stop signs on traffic flow. The, our staff did a traffic count in the AM peak and the PM peak hours. And then we worked with a consultant to do sort of a high-level study of the impacts of the intersection with and without the stop signs. So there are some benefits and some drawbacks to keeping these stop signs in place permanently. Most significantly, the improvement is Elm Street. Of course, it's difficult to make a left coming off Elm with the traffic on State Street. So there's a fairly significant improvement to traffic off Elm Street with the stop signs in place. Conversely, there is a slight negative impact to vehicles traveling on State Street in the form of delays, but but they're relatively small, so we're looking at you know, roughly you know, five-second delay or so. So the way we look at traffic impacts is through level of service. So there are there's six categories, A through F of level of service for traffic. A being the best with essentially no delays and F being the worst with over a 50 second, 50-second delay. So right now, the way it's structured is that everything, well, without the stop signs, without the new stop signs on State Street, there is an existing stop sign on Elm. But without the two new ones on State Street, the poorest level services on Elm, and that's a C. By the addition of the stop signs, that goes up to a level of service B. So so basically, there are a few criteria that we look at as far as recommending permanent signs being added. That's the safety of pedestrians. It's the level of service. And basically what we're recommending tonight is that because the level of service reductions on State Street are fairly minimal and that we are gaining improvements at the Elm Street intersection. And that the the conditions at the intersection do warrant or allow for, we're not, we're not required to put stop signs in under the current conditions, but it's certainly allowable. And and given that there's not significant negative impacts to the traffic on along State Street and that there's improvements on Elm as well as improvements to pedestrian safety, we are recommending to keep these in permanently. So there's some, if council does choose to keep these in place permanently, we do need to paint the stop bars. That's, that's sort of our thought priority if this does get approved tonight. That makes, you know, really, I think, improve compliance. There are some of the comments I got is, is that not everybody is currently stopping at those stop signs. So we did add some flags on signs to try to improve visibility and get people to really notice those, but also the stop bars, we think will really improve compliance. So that's, that's top on our list if this does get approved.
Kurt, is there the capacity to put one of those flashing red lights suspended over the intersection the way we have at some of the other intersections like Elm and Court?
Yeah, that certainly could be done, you know, there's, there's some capital expense to that. So my suggestion would be that we first add the stop bars, evaluate the compliance at that point, and then if needed, then we would implement flashing lights.
Okay, thanks, anybody else? Any members of the public? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thanks, Kurt. All right. Item 12, public hearing for community development block grant, DR applications. And even though you're going to present, I'll open the public hearing right now, just so I don't forget. And you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Miller, Planning Director. So yeah, I did have reminder to make sure we open the public hearing, because this is a public hearing. So in order to apply for a community development block grant, we are required to hold a public hearing. And the hearing is to obtain the views of citizens on community development, furnish information concerning the amount of funds that would be available and the range of community development activities that may be taken under this program. Impact any archaeological and historic resources that may affect the proposed project and to give affected citizens the opportunity to examine the proposed statement of
the proposed statement of projected use of these funds. So this is going to be a public hearing to really talk about our grant application. These are 100% no match grants, so these are all federal monies. They were set aside as a result of the flood itself, after a flood. A certain amount of the funds gets allocated to the community development program, CDBG program, and they administer these funds back to the municipalities in the areas that were impacted by the flood. So that's why we are eligible. The four projects that we have applied for or are going to be applying for, the first one is, we'll call it $760,000. Which is going to be used to remove the Pioneer Dam, Pioneer Street Dam and 25,000 cubic yards of impounded sediment. Funds will also be used for floodplain restoration at Five Home Farm Way, including the removal of 21,000 cubic yards of material. Should increase the flood resiliency upstream of the city and hopefully impact flood levels downstream as well. So the second is a little over $3 million, which will be used to protect the Montpelier Water Resource Recovery Facility, which is our sewer plant. And this will protect it from future flooding by installing a bypass pipe and by burrowing up and elevating dog over it. The third project is $1.93 million, which will be used to remove the Bailey Dam and 32,000 cubic yards of impounded sediment that's behind the dam. And the fourth project is a grant to replace three culverts on Elm Street. They basically start at Finch Road and head towards the reservoir, so we're talking about out on Elm Street, out in that direction. There are three culverts that failed during recent floods and need to be replaced, so we are looking for about 2.5 million for that project. So those are the four proposals. And then once we have the hearing, if council would make a motion to approve the four resolutions that are in your book, please, 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 please sign those four resolutions because I will need them for the grants. So.
Alright, since this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to make a comment on any of these proposals. And I'll ask you, Mike, have you received any comments from the public on what we're proposing to?
No, not at this time, I would have ordered to you if we had received.
Thanks. Seeing no public comment in the room or online, I'll close the public hearing and open it for council discussion. We might not get all of these, right?
To, we might not get approved for all of them?
Yeah.
I have we really have no idea how this is going to go. But our conversations with the staff seem very highly supportive of the Water Resource Recovery Facility and the Pioneer Dam projects. The other two, they gave us suggestions, which we are working on, of ways that we could strengthen those applications. The culverts, they felt, you know, maybe we only get one of the three culverts funded instead of all three, but our best thing to do is put in all the applications and see which ones get funded. But we are optimistic we will get some of them.
Great. Council members, any comments or questions? Alright, I'd entertain a motion to approve this proposal. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. This is great.
They should be in your book.
John Scottum, they're coming around. Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, special events, items fourteen and fifteen.
Bringing the special events policy back in front of you, as you recall, we did take this policy up back in the spring. I think so, it's been quite some time. And so we wanted to get it back in front of you to get a decision on the draft policy. And if you should so choose to go with this policy, then we would need to make an ordinance change. And so that's what's before us tonight for these two items, so I'm going to let Zach and Deputy Chief Mullen get to it with the presentation.
Awesome, thank you, Kelly. My name is Zach Bodge and I'm the Deputy Director for Public Works, Kevin Mullins would be. And this is, we're bringing this forward as part of the Public Safety Team. In your packets, we provided you with a whole bunch of documentation, one being the data log, the memo that we wrote, a proposed fee schedule, a draft ordinance change, some example policies, and the street closure policy. So first, why are we looking at this? There's two main reasons, one is cost and the second one, which is a really big one, is resource allocation. Events take a lot of staff resource time. So in our review of the data, we looked at we basically found that events have three different categories, small events, medium events, large events. The small events are very little staff resource time. Medium events, it's been about 25 to 50 hours to have staff support a medium event. A large event requires a significant amount of staff time, typically minimum of 50 hours upwards to 100 plus, and that's specifically time for the event only. So things that are not included in that are pre-planning time, our time meeting with the event coordinators, to go over logistics, the three or four meetings that we have to go through all the what we need from them, the insurance certificates and all the, all the work that it takes to actually get the event up to speed. One of the things that I want to stress the most is that our ultimate goal is to make sure that we provide events to the public and for the community while maintaining safety for them. We want to be able to provide these events, but at the end of the day, we have limited resources and we need to make sure that when we have an event, that everyone is safe to do so. So that's kind of the why we're looking at this. It's really just about the cost for the event, recovering the resources that we are putting forth. We spend a lot of money and departmental costs to support these events. The next thing is what we've seen over the past year, couple of years. So we have three years worth of data, but specifically over the last year, we've seen entities have a different desire to have an event, right? So what may have previously been a sidewalk closure event with very little resources, there's a bigger want to have a street closure or to have something that would require more resources to be deployed. Those events to put out crash barriers are, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of DPW resources, it takes a lot of ED and fire resources as well. Again, the biggest thing is for the safety of the general public. So we look, right now, we're at 27 events for this year. I anticipate that we're going to be over 30 events total with over 400 hours of staff time directly related to supporting that event. There was a circumstance in New Orleans where they decided not to deploy their crash barricades, the exact same ones that we have. And because of resource allocation, and New Orleans is getting sued because they had the tools and they didn't, and they failed to use them appropriately to protect the public. So when we, we want to make sure that we have events, that we support them, but we also need to make sure that we're doing it safely for everybody. Next is we went and we've looked at some different communities, both Burlington Stowe, St. Albans. They all have policies in place to have fee recovery for these events. And it is common with many other communities across the nation. Typically, what you see is that some communities decide that maybe the smaller events, they're not going to charge, that those are more community oriented. But the larger events that maybe bring in a profit or are not necessarily a small entity, they may charge for those. So in the policy that we have put for, put forward to you, profit events would be charged, but the council would have the ability to waive or reduce fees for other events. So we would give you the ability to make that decision moving forward for all the other events. What we're recommending is obviously to adopt the policy that we've amended, including the fee structure with you guys having the ability to reduce or waive the fees. One thing that I would like to note that moving forward with the package that you guys get every time that we have a permit, you guys review them. What I would like to see moving forward is that we provide you with an estimate that is physically attached to the packet. So when you guys are reviewing a permit, you see that's going to be, I don't know, 100 hours of staff total time for this particular event. And that's going to take, you know, six officers on overtime, that's going to be five DPW, that's going to be four EMS. So that when you're approving the permit, you get a real picture of that true cost for that particular event. And then lastly, something that we've already put into motion is we've created a special account code that at a minimum internally will be used to track those costs and then there will be a transfer over so that it's not impacting each of the individualized department budgets. I guess with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Folks, any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, this is great, I loved all the information, it's super helpful to many of you all know I like data, so thank you for taking the time to pull all this information, I just want to make sure one, I do like the the line in here that the council can have a decision to waive a fee if we like, if, you know. I like that kind of out just in case, and I do like the profit events being charged. I just want to make sure, I don't know if we've thought about this as like a process, but you know, we have reoccurring events every year, and so it would be nice to maybe intentionally invite them to our public hearing. Just do some outreach to make sure we get their feedback, are there any unintended consequences that we're not thinking about with this policy? Like, I really want these folks to take a look at this and make sure, because I know, I mean, I've helped run a bunch of these events and we plan 12 months ahead of time. And so if we're aware that there's going to be additional cost, it's fine. We just have to put that as part of our planning to raise money or put it in our budget. But I would not want to see some of these events not come to Montpelier because it's too expensive.
Yeah, I think that's really one of the big pieces about changing the language to not just waive the fee, but to waive or reduce. Wave kind of seems like it's all or nothing, so the language, changing that language to waive or reduce would give you the ability to say, you know what? For this event, we're not going to charge equipment time, or we're going to, we're, it give you the flexibility to make those changes. And I'm perfectly okay with reaching out to those event organizers and having some discussions with them. I will say that when we sat down with the Corporate Cup and went over like the cost of the event, they had no idea how much it took for us to manage their event, right? And there's a lot of time in there that is not even captured on this work order. We're looking at work orders of 10,000 for one year and around 7,000 for another year. And that doesn't include the 60 or so hours that we spend, you know, sweeping the roads and doing patching before before that, and that's because those things we're going to do anyways, they're maintenance, so we didn't charge that to the work order. But there's a lot of other time that we spend organizing it, and we have, I don't know, eight to 10 staff that are in these planning meetings with these organizers specifically for Corporate Cup. So it's a lot, and that's not, that isn't even captured in this work order that we're talking about or what's in here right now, so.
I mean, I think the, I think the events would be open, they just need to be aware, they need to plan, they need to put in their budget. You know, to have that, you know, communication from the city that we are changing this policy, I think that would be very helpful, and I think, you know, these are economic drivers, so we have to also weigh, you know, we're working with Montpelier Live to think of how we can bring more events. And so it's like, how do we weigh your, all the resources of the city with trying to bring in more events so that we can, you know, have, you know, a stronger economy and people spending money in our stores. So I'm hoping the number of events go up, but we're going to have to charge because it's also your time, and then what if you're at capacity? Right, so I think we're going to all have to work very closely together with this to make sure as we build additional events, we're not, you know, stretching the system too much. But I, I, you know what I mean? I think just being aware of that, but I just want to make sure all these partners are very closely involved in this process.
Thank you for your presentation, I just want to make one suggestion, are you planning to put this information on the application form somewhere? So when people or organization committee, when they are filling out the form, they can see this information.
Like the fee schedule?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be part of the application, right? And then when we review it as the Public Safety Team, that what we put as a package that comes to you includes our estimate at that point in time. So you're getting a full packet at the council level that says, here's the event, here's what the Public Safety Team has deemed all of the necessary components for this, and then that would also be provided to the application.
So my question was, I, I'm I want to have an event here in Montpelier, and I'm, I'm for filling out the form. Do I see the fees when I do the application form?
Okay. Yeah, the fee schedule would be attached to the application and then they could see all of the different components. They may need to ask us and work with us to say, because they may not know how many DPW employees that we feel are going to be needed in order to have a successful event. A lot of times, they, what they'll tell us is we want to close Bailey Ave or State Street. And then we say, well, if you're going to close State Street, then you need crash barricades on either end. If we don't have crash barricades, then we need DPW in vehicles to be at either side. So it's that part of the logistics when they bring forth their application that we can help sit with them and say, based on the information provided, this is what we anticipate.
So each event is unique, so their fee will be different. That's why there will be general information in the application form. But each event should come and talk to you and they will have different.
And some applicants may choose when they see the fees, right, to alter their event. It's something that may not be so resource-heavy to the city.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So.
So how do you think that will alter the, the application process? I mean, do you think people will fill out the form, send it to you? You'll, you'll go through and do the estimate and get it back to them and they'll say, holy mackerel, and I, and then have to revise it? Or I mean, is it going to add complexity and time on both ends or?
I mean, there's already some of that, right? Because we've been talking about, we've been having these discussions with some of the entities and just about being able to staff their events and they, in some instances, have had to change kind of what they wanted because of our ability to assist them. So that's already kind of happening. This would be a little bit more formal, that like, here's what you're asking for.
Doesn't really add a whole step, it's just.
Yeah.
I think it adds some clarity to when, when they have an event and they can see the fee structure. I think it adds a little bit of clarity to them to know what's involved in their event.
Yeah, they'll see the structure, but they won't know how, how much, how many, you know, pieces of equipment, how many personnel they'll need. So they'll know they're going to be paying for that, they just won't know the quantity until you guys get a hold of it, right? Are we expecting they'll, they'll contact you before they submit an application, or is it going to be an iterative process where they're, where it's going back and forth?
So.
I, I mean, I guess that could add a step for us if, if we wanted to be upfront with them and, and once we get the application. I, I think part of this packet shows a change in what is in ordinance now that says three days
Yeah.
Notice the Chief of Police, which is not reasonable on any level.
Yeah.
To, to a 30-day notice. I think that gives us the time to, we, you know, we meet every two weeks as a Public Safety Team, we can look at this. We could, you know, email them back the estimate and then we can have a dialogue about.
Well, I was just thinking to Adrian's point, it might be good to communicate with, with all of, you know, all, all the organizers of past events on what the process, what process you'd prefer or ask them for input on on how they feel the process will change, just so that they're not caught unaware or get tangled up in. Caught unaware or get tangled up in something that's more complicated than I thought it was gonna be.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any problem with with going through that. Um, it might be helpful to kinda. Do a one page of like the process that we envision, so that when we we can provide that to the applicants, like, here's what we. Into, I mean, yes, we have a policy, but it kind of a step by step, you will submit this. Uh, we will then provide you with an estimate, um, then it will go to the public safety team, once approved by the public safety team, it would go to council for approval, uh, so on.
Thanks for all the hard work on this. I think probably the biggest problem's gonna be the first year. I think it'll get easier with everybody, especially the ones that keep coming back, so. The first year's probably gonna be a little rough, and that it's always kind of the way it is. You gotta work through the bumps and everything, but I think after that. People will know what's expected and it'll get better, so. You know, buckle up for that first year a little bit, but I think once we get by that, it'll only get better, so thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I I have a couple of questions about, I mean, thanks for the work, and I also appreciate the data that you put into it, um. I guess I have a question of like, what like, and don't take this away, but like, what's the problem? Is the problem the fact that this is costing actual money that's impacting the public safety budgets? Right? That like, so it's like overtime, things like that that are impacting the budget?
Uh, like Corporate Cup?
Yeah.
All hands on deck for the, which are mandatory overtime guys, you know, every officer's, you know, every officer's working, we actually have to hire. Share the public, first office comes out of.
And it's your budget.
Out of our budget.
Right.
Um, some of the smaller events, it's just, it's just. An hour of staff time moving, updating applications, but the medium to large events.
Right.
Sticking within costs.
So that that, thank you, that's very helpful. And then the second thing I have a question about, it's just really this capacity issue, right? Like, it's. Um. If 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 we're, if you're having a a smaller event, and it's just like however many officers or police you have on staff. Are you bringing on more people um for that event to cover that event, or is it just people who are regularly on duty and like, that's just something that's happening that you're aware of?
So for the small events, stick with something that we just. The latter on duty.
We'll just figure it out.
You know, they'll make a presence if if they can, if we're not away on the ball. The medium to larger events, I'm ordering people to work.
Right.
Um, and these are people that have weekends off every third month.
Right.
So for me, they're ordered them to work on one of their public, week ends off is, you know, it's hard.
Yeah.
So we're we're just trying to strike a balance where then. You know, the the needs of of the requester. I think that thirty days gives us a little flexibility, three days goes not enough.
Totally.
Department.
Yeah. Um, I really appreciate all of that. The thing, a couple of things that kinda. That I strike me are that if I look at this, you know, thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars, like two thirds of that cost comes from. Three events, if I understand this correctly, right? And so I wonder, instead of having something in there that says. Every time a medium event comes to us and they get a fee schedule that says like three thousand dollars that we consider whether or not we wanna waive it. What if we just set a threshold for when you hit a larger event, you'll be expected to subsidize that event at this level, and it just makes it, I think, a lot. Uh, yeah.
Sorry, I think you see that in Burnington's policy. I I think their threshold is any event that carries a lot of power, people, I'm not quite certain about them, but um. Any event that burns in a significant amount of people, they're required to pay for certain services.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, I mean, you've done a good job here of delineating the different sizes of events, and. It just strikes me, if that's the driver of cost, and kinda going back to something you said, Adrian, about like, we want events. Right? Like, I mean, I feel like I go to communities like every day and like, like, have more events, get more people in your downtown, get more, right? And it's. I I think I totally really appreciate what the motivation here on your end and really respect and wanna honor it. Um, but I do fear that this is gonna create fewer events, or people, you know, being reluctant to have events, and so. I really want like that all species day, that kinda like. Weird, unique Montpelier thing to happen, and I just feel like. Uh, if we set some kind of threshold that I think we could maybe look at that or make that happen, where we can really cut maybe two thirds of the cost of this. Just based on that, and the final thing I'll just say is like, it did the real, the one main kind of concern that I had. Um, unrelated to the cost was just, I I think I'm understanding that Montpelier Alive right now is a part of the conversations about events, and. If I read the the revised version that they would kind of be like dropped from the advisory panel. And I would just really love to see the integration of Montpelier Alive into these kinds of conversations like moving forward.
Nice comment on that.
Yeah.
So, um, we did have Montpelier Alive review the policy, um, and so the reason why we sort of. Changed the way the policy is structured right now is just the jurisdiction. So, for example, when we're reviewing these events, you know, while they. Would be a member sort of advocating on behalf or working with the business community, we really value their input. You know, it's really sort of the the public safety components associated with these events that, you know, we were trying to capture. Um, we did check with Katie to make sure that we weren't, you know, leaving them out of the process. Uh, we have worked in um a new, well, not new, something that we really. Have really punched up, I think, um, over the last couple of months is the calendar, making sure that they get online, so that then they have access to them. Um, and then we do need to work with them a little bit more in terms of. You know, the what they would really like to see is they would like to see these events coming in so that they have an awareness. And so that they can work then with the businesses and making sure that then, you know, whatever the sports might be downtown that they need, that they can see. You know, that then, you know, they're part of that conversation, but then in terms of public safety. You know, that's not necessarily something that.
Yeah, I mean, I I appreciate that, but I I also think like Montpelier Alive participating in the conversation in the police department, maintaining jurisdiction over public safety, like. Those aren't mutually exclusive, like, I think that that can, you know, I mean, I don't, Kate, like, Katie runs Montpelier Alive, right? Like, she she should have kids, but like, I just. It struck me that it seems like best practice would be to have like everybody around the table that's involved in events for the good of the entire picture of the city.
Any other? Questions or comments from the council? It's it strikes me that the. One thing, you know, you notice I didn't open this as a public hearing, if if we. Decide to go forward, and I'm getting a sense that people are interested in going forward, then. The next thing that we would do would be to set it, set this for a public hearing. To discuss the actual uh ordinance, and it strikes me that we've heard from Ben a couple of uh. Potential amendments to an ordinance when it gets to that point, you know, the uh the scope of the fees, the potential role of Montpelier Alive, and there may be others. Uh, I think it's very important to get. The impact, input from people who conduct these events, cuz cuz I think. We're we're dealing with a couple of very significant considerations. One is. We have and continue, will continue to have limited financial resources, and we have to. Uh. Be be aware of that and uh. Be aware of the impact on on especially DPW and police, uh, firing on feelings also. Um. But we also wanna have events, we want, we wanna have more events, and so uh. So it's really the balancing.
And I could say like, you know, I haven't been through a budget season yet, but like, it just really strikes me that it's like. Um. I'm really cognizant of the way in which this is impacting and causing budget pressures in your department that really, I'm not sure should be borne by that specific budget, right? Like, if we value events as a city and see it as an economic development strategy, like, is there another line item or another way in which we're paying for? That support of these events that shouldn't undermine like your ability to hire, you know, bring people on for overtime when there's a real. When you really have a shortage.
Uh, like our current budget here.
Yeah. Right. I, yeah.
And we have, in the last couple of years, looked at the whole question of overtime, and is there a way to limit overtime to uh? Bring the budget under control, and it's, it's very, very difficult, because these events. Some of them we can plan for, some of them. We don't know whether they're gonna happen, and so overtime is. As much as we try to control it, overtime is not subject to our control. So I guess what I've looked for at this point is that. See if people wanna go for, is there a motion to uh? Schedule a public hearing on on the uh draft ordinance that's in the packet. There.
Yeah, I'm I'm all for it, we're moving forward, um. And but I'm, uh, when I look at the policy and the ordinance and start to get a little confused. About the wording here and there, and are they all lining up? And I'm not sure that the. The proposed language change to the ordinance quite lines up with what's being proposed in the policy, so that's my only caution is to say, let's make sure we get that really. Nailed down tightly before we start having public hearings on it.
Oh, so you wanna. So you're not ready to move for a public hearing cuz you wanna.
No, I mean.
Send staff back.
We could, we could, we could go ahead and schedule one, but um I just wanna make sure that. It's really all the editing and everything is, it's done before we actually have a hearing.
All right. So where does that leave us? Do you, do you have particular suggestions for tonight, or?
Um. Well, are we talking about the ordinance?
Yeah.
Now? Um, so. Just looking over quickly, there there's. It's originally a parade ordinance, and then the title was changed to special events, but then parade keeps showing up. Throughout the ordinance, and it doesn't address special events in the ordinance. And um, so that was the, that was the big thing, just to make sure that that's clear. And then I also wasn't sure if it referenced the policy, and I'm a little unclear on the. Relationship between policy and ordinance. And so maybe we have a clear policy, and it's referenced in the ordinance saying according to the policy, and that we can make. Policy changes in the future if we want to, and without having to make ordinance changes.
So, uh, I've made some notes on that, those issues that I'll be happy to. Organize and. Send to Kelly, and from there it can go wherever it needs to go. We can then.
Yeah, great. Yeah.
And so. Would you like to see those changes, Brian Kelly, before we schedule a public hearing? All right.
Uh. Just clarity, um, I appreciate that, you know, getting sort of the changes right here, the um. Intention within sort of the the draft ordinance language was to to capture um. Some of the elements of the policy, so for instance, we really wanted to make sure we captured the seventy-two hours, thirty days. Rather than seventy-two hours, you know, making sure that we were making that sort of accommodation without totally striking the ordinance itself. So, you know, making sure that we were speaking about between, you know, really being consistent with. What the intention is of the ordinance, making it more inclusive, so, you know, I do see that the the point about the. The parade uh language, making sure it's consistent throughout the ordinance, and then also making any other adjustment that you would like to see in this ordinance for these special events to make sure that it is. Reflective of intent, um, and then just the sort of the distinction between a policy and an ordinance. Is that the, you know, policy is way more flexible, you know, and it can be changed, you know, based on practice, whereas the ordinance is enforceable. Um, and it's, you know, a little bit more. Structured um and qualified in that way, so. I'm happy to change it and also bring it back to you um with those changes, so I appreciate you taking the time to look at it. Um, and then going through the policy with us to talk through some of the things, and then we also, you know, can um maybe modify. The policy um to include. Just, our intention was not to exclude Montpelier Alive, I just wanna make that clear.
No, totally.
So so like, we're we're happy to make sure that, you know, the their role in the process of reviewing those events, because the downtown business community. Community is very important to us, um, and, you know, the events are important, so we're, it this. All of this is about striking a balance between sort of like what we need, so this conversation has been really good, it's been a long time coming, so. I appreciate your patience, and also um, just the team really did do a great job of putting the details together, and I can kinda see how that really helped with the conversation, so. We're happy to bring the uh ordinance back. Um, and I'll, I'll totally take you up on your offer to, you know, provide some comments here for us to get in there. Um, with, so.
All right, so it seems like we don't need to take action tonight. We'll hear from you again. Yes, you can, Steve.
Thanks, guys.
We're we're still in the process of formulating what it's gonna be, so.
Raise a couple of cautions, Steve Witter. Uh. I I like the idea of setting a threshold that only the big profitable events get charged at at all. I think Montpelier Alive would be an invaluable contributor to helping determine or make a recommendation, an affirmative recommendation on whether to waive. Any or all of the smaller ones, cuz they bring a an economic benefit that outweighs the cost. I can see as a taxpayer that. People are gonna feel like something we've been paying for in our tax base is now no longer here and and be billed. It, we're, we've been paying for it because we like it, and now. We're gonna. Quit doing it. We're no longer gonna have that as part of our package of city benefits, and we're gonna shift the cost to the presenters. And some of the presenters rely on a whole bunch of volunteers, and their volunteers are gonna say, hell, we're have to pay two thousand dollars for this, we're not gonna volunteer anymore. So this thing could really. Disrupt uh a lot of the fabric of uh. Kind of volunteer enthusiasm to hold events. I can see people just saying it's not worth it like our developers. Montpelier can screw anything up, so I'm just raising those as as cautions. I don't have all the answers, but um. I s- I see it's fraught. I'd also like to get to the bottom of how much have they been charging people while no one noticed? Uh, you know, how much revenue did they bilk out of people wi- without any authority under an ordinance, you know?
All right, thank you. Yes, chief.
It is currently. At charge for events, I just wanna make that clear.
You're not bilking anybody? Thank you. All right, so Kelly, we'll hear hear back from you. Thanks, folks. Now we're up to appointments to the Development Review Board.
I'll move them, but if they wanna speak, I'd let. Have them come up and speak.
Sure.
You've been waiting here long enough.
Well, I appreciate your including me. It's quite a meeting you've had here, commentator. Uh, and thanks for, I've never seen one like that since I was in. Very, very, by the way. And thank you, uh, I appreciate your listening, not literally.
Thank you.
Uh, that's all for the, for the audience. So, first of all, I'm Bill Trolley, um. And.
Why don't you stay by the.
Oh, sorry.
Table, just so you're on the microphone and around the camera.
Or, or sorry, I'm used to giving, you know, part of patients to large.
Yeah, you got a good voice for it.
No microphone and stuff like that, okay. Um, I'm Bill Trolley, and and uh I put in my application to join the DRB. Um, mainly just to help out where I could. Uh, you have my answers to my application. Um, I don't know if I could add any more to that, you're certainly welcome to ask me questions about that. Uh, I certainly noted the gentleman up front, I think he was the first uh speaker from the audience who talked about legal expertise. Uh, I do not have a real estate uh legal's degree by any chance, or any legal degree. I am not a city planner. I am not a parliamentarian either. Um, but I think I might be able to bring something to the DRB based on the experience I've had, and it's in the. The uh application uh answers uh briefly. Very briefly, by the way, uh, but I thought if you wanted to ask me a question about in detail, that was in that application, I'd be led to. Answer it.
Great, thank you.
Keep us within the five minutes and keep it short. I understand you've been through, you know, and I, we all have sat through uh quite a meeting, not been to one like this recently. So um, I'm gonna try to keep it short, and I'll answer if there were any questions I can briefly as I can.
Thank you for volunteering to do this. Are there any questions? Jim?
I'll be glad to move his appointment and the other person's appointment. I don't know if they're here and they wanna speak.
So the motion is to appoint Bill Jolly and Elvira Dana to the Development Review Board?
Yeah, but before you vote on that, may I put in something?
Sure.
You have two vacancies, I understand, you have a termed one. You have two vacancies. I understand that you have a termed one. Which I think was twenty-eight or twenty-nine or something like that. And then you have an alternate. I'm requesting that I go into the alternate.
Okay.
I know that's your choice and that's fine. I'll I'll certainly belong with whatever you choose. But I would prefer and discuss this with Meredith. Uh, I would prefer to uh have the alternate uh position be assigned.
I'll make that part of my motion.
Uh, yes, thank you, sir.
Is there, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for coming in. I really appreciate it.
May your meetings not go this late.
All right. Chief Libby, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, Department of Fire and EMS. Coming for you tonight, um, we get approval for a rate increase. As you see in your packet for uh in withholding, as you see in your packet, we came back in March and did a midterm rate increase, um, which we hadn't done any rate increases in a number of years. So um, you know, at that point, we were just trying to collect get to where we're actually covering some of the costs and taking some of the burden off the tax base. So tonight coming forward and my intention is going forward that we do this once a year and it's not a midterm thing, but that we take care of it. Uh, Medicare rates are set in January during the budgeting process. We would be able to figure out what our rates are um in accordance with what the Medicare rates are set. And then, you know, come forward with that rate increase before the July first fiscal year starts. So um, what you see in your packet is where we're at today compared to our neighboring agencies. The differences, um, and then the recommendation to bring us up to those rates. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I also want to keep your time valuable.
Thank you, folks. Any questions? I think this is a great idea. I was on the Montpelier Housing Authority Board for many years and one of the concerns we had with some of our projects is that sometimes we'd go for several years without an increase. And then when we had to do an increase, it would hit people hard. And so getting on a regular schedule of increasing, I think makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed rate increases? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, yeah, you can.
Briefly again. And there needs to be in informed uh consent of the especially with the non-transport ambulance calls that people are not, and I even asked Officer Philbrick, he was not aware that we had raised these rates and you're potentially treating somebody on the side of the road, you know? We we have a lot of those uh unhoused people getting treated for some some malady or another, not able to get up or walk or a lady laying with her on the side of the road with her legs hanging out in the street. And those are potentially seven hundred and fifty dollar bills that people aren't informed that if you you have to refuse treatment altogether, refuse transport, refuse treatment altogether, or you're gonna be potentially liable for seven hundred and something dollars. And I just don't think that the awareness is out there yet that uh accepting a blood pressure check from an ambulance driver could cost that. So I'm I'm no expert on this topic, but I it scares me that people could potentially be incurring these bills unwittingly. Uh, but again, we've grown accustomed to thinking they're part of our city package of services. So I don't have the answers. I'm just raising the caution.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you have a response to that?
Yes. So happy to address it. The fee is not seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's a four hundred and fifty dollar fee. And as you see in your packet, there's certain criteria that need to be met. And if those criteria aren't met, including having the patient sign that they've been educated. Um, and that EMS protocols were conducted, then it's not a billable incident, so.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We got a motion and a second already, didn't we? Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, chief. Item nineteen. Someone's gotta be last, Kurt. Leachate acceptance.
Kurt Monica, Public Works Director. Um. So the um this topic tonight is to discuss the number of um or the volume of leachate that the city is allowed or authorized, the staff is authorized to take from City Council uh per day. Um, but just to give, there's been um a lot of discussion around this topic over the years through several different councils. So just gonna give a little background of um uh how we got here and and where we're at now and um yeah, just to provide some background. So starting with um the biggest issue associated with um leachate treatment historically has been concerns around PFOS. And so PFOS is what's known as the forever chemical. Um, so it's a long chemical carbon chain that uh just doesn't break down. So it's carbon chains. Um, just uh they're really hard to uh break apart, very strong uh chemical formula, and they're used in um primarily like waterproofing, so umbrellas and the Gore-Tex and um even rugs um and furniture have a lot of PFOS on them. And so um most of these materials end up in the landfill uh eventually and and then they um tend to leach off um uh, you know, over time and end up collecting the bottom of the landfill in the form of leachate. So um the concentrations uh in um of PFOS in leachate is um comparably high compared to um, you know, other sources of PFOS. But PFOS is in um is in is pretty much in everything or most people have it in their bodies and um we also get a lot of PFOS um coming through the pipes to the plant. Um, just everything from detergents to uh whatever, whatever other things people are flushing down the toilets. Um, so the city's been accepting leachate since approximately two thousand and two. That's when uh we constructed the receiving station at the plant. There was state assistance in that. There's a need um for disposal site for leachate as well as septicage. So both of those septicage and leachate uh started at our plant in around two thousand and two. The most we've ever received historically is four loads a day. And one load is approximately eight thousand gallons, so the total max we've taken is around thirty-two thousand gallons a day. Um, currently, we're the only facility in the state that's allowed to take leachate through our permit. No other um wastewater plant in Vermont. Applied to get permitted to accept leachate, and so they're um they're not authorized to. And um the revenue component, we do charge um to accept and treat leachate. It's approximately a hundred thousand dollars per load uh received uh per day annually. Um. So uh as history of the uh the motions made by council in two thousand and two, um council uh noted after the the concerns around PFOS were raised that in July twenty-three, uh we would not accept leachate here unless um it was first treated um to remove PFOS. And uh the summer of twenty-two, um the city authorized or the council authorized staff to apply for an application for one million dollars through ARPA funds uh as a a pass-through um grant to Casella to construct a PFOS treatment system. Um. And in February twenty-four, um the state, Casella and DPW, um co-presented to council um uh around what the anticipated regulations would be for surface water discharge, which is what our plant puts out. So currently there are limits for drinking water. Um, but there are no limits for wastewater plant discharge, and there still is not any established limits in Vermont um for the amount of PFOS that can be discharged from the facility. Um, at that meeting, uh council made a motion that um only leachate that was um treated to remove eighty percent of the aggregate of the five compounds that are regulated in drinking water would be accepted at the plant. And at a subsequent meeting, uh the next, the following meeting, it was limited to one load per day. Uh, until the permanent system was constructed. So the summer of twenty twenty-four, um Casella completed the permanent um treatment system. And um in the fall of twenty-four, we were we were authorized to accept one load per day of treated leachate, which we're currently doing now. Um, just recently, we got um we I requested updated results from Casella of the level of treatment that they were uh getting from their new facility, which is attached. Um, and it does meet the minimum of eighty percent aggregate. We're doing a little better than that, actually. Um somewhere around eighty-five percent. And um there's a little, there is a a relationship between um the city accepting leachate and our disposal of solids. So we take in a lot of septicage and municipal sludge, which is other treatment plants um that um don't have dewatering to sort of dispose of their solids. And all of our solids are land apply or uh or go to the landfill. There was historically a long time ago, you could land apply, but because there's also PFOS in uh in the solids from the plant, you can all, you know, generally um you can't land apply anymore. There's a maybe one or two plants that still do it. Um, so they give us a discount because we take leachate, we pay rough a little over fifty percent of market rate for disposing our solids, and we have a lot of them because of the amount of septicage that we treat. And they have held that through um through this whole process. They haven't raised um the disposal rate other than the trucking costs. Um. And so if the city um does not take any leachate, most of it goes to the Plattsburgh wastewater plant, which eventually ends up in Lake Champlain, which is the same receiving uh water body as our plant. But you're adding the trucking, so it's a much longer trucking. So you know, the environmental impacts to us not taking it are are negative in that um you have more emissions through trucking. Um, and then as far as um the amount of PFOS related to leachate compared to what comes into our plant through the piping system, um now that they are uh fully treating the leachate, um it's approximately three percent of the PFOS. Um this is assuming we're at uh max capacity of around thirty thousand gallons a day or four loads a day of leachate. That would be uh three percent of the PFOS would be from leachate and ninety-seven percent would be um through the inflow pipes. So it's a very, after now that it's treated, it's a very small fraction of the amount of PFOS um that the plant's discharging. So um what I'm proposing um tonight is that council authorize uh DPW to accept up to two loads a day. Um, the reason we're not requesting four loads at this time is because our our disinfection system, which is ultraviolet disinfection, um it's aged out. It's in it's planned to be replaced in the next project, but um because it's not, we can't get parts for it anymore, but it is it is functioning fine. We don't have any violations or anything like that, but uh we don't want to um to go up to the full four loads until that system is upgraded. So the the request tonight, our suggestion is that council authorize DPW to take up to two loads a day of treated leachate from Casella.
And would that get us up to two hundred thousand a year instead of a hundred thousand a year?
Correct.
I I think this is a great presentation. I I think that what we've done over the years has worked, you know, in terms of getting uh a reduction of uh PFOS is uh as high as we can, you know, with with the supporting like Casella to do that. Um one of the things that the uh figures that you point out, the uh the percentage of the uh PFOS and the leach leachate versus the percentage of in our in our waste, own waste is that PFOS is not something that somebody else is doing to us. We're we're all a cause of that problem, but with the products we make and the problems products we buy and everything gets flushed down down the toilets. So I so I think this is a a pretty pretty clear clear win for us to do this. Councilman Sal.
Um. Thanks, Kurt. Uh, does um, I'm just trying to refresh my memory from the last presentation when Consul was here. Um a couple of questions. Does does Plattsburgh require PFOS removal?
They do not.
They do not?
No.
So would Casella stop treating it? And just ship it to Plattsburgh without treating it?
No, they're they're committed to
They're treating it all.
They're gonna treat it. Well, yeah, they treat everything that comes to us. I think they're I believe they are treating all their leachate. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but certainly all of it that comes to us and what they can to Plattsburgh as well. So they're not gonna change whether we take it or not. They're still gonna continue treating for PFOS.
And how do we um continue to monitor the PFOS level? You know, load by load, how do we do they do they measure it every time, every day and ship it, or is it an occasional thing or?
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, so the the results take a long time um to get from the test. So, you know, and they only have a, you know, limited uh storage volume at the landfill. Uh, so what we were um suggesting is uh like a quarterly um sample results we provide to the city.
And uh last question, what the the system that we would require to be able to take more loads would cost us what?
So that's um the planned upgrade that we're um about to start final design on.
Oh, okay.
It's I think it's somewhere around one point five million, but we have to do it anyway, just because that um that system's no longer supported for the manufacturer, so you can't get replacement parts anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, there may, this isn't directly on point, but but since you're here talking about the sewer plant, uh are we still having the uh issues with the odor at the plant?
So we haven't had documented complaints. Also, um part of the scope of the project is to treat others.
Thanks. Council, anything else? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Is there a motion?
Uh, I motion to, uh, I'll move to approve as Justin has recommended.
Is there a second?
Yes, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Kurt. All right. Um, we're up to city council reports. I'm not sure whose turn it is. Helen, I'll start start at your end tonight.
Uh, no report.
Ben, no report. Jim?
Uh, I'll just say that I went to the um the Trash Tramps presentation. Uh, the city was well represented. Kelly had almost her whole staff there, it seemed. And uh it was really well done, well put together. And I just have to say, it was fun going to a city event that had no complaints, no problems, no infighting. Everybody was happy. And it was like, yeah, we could finally sing, come by, uh, hold hands and walk off together. So it was just a terrific event.
Thanks, Jim. Sal?
Uh, no report.
No report.
Adrian?
Um, I'll just give a quick update on the childcare task force. So we finished up our engagement with first children, yeah, children financed. Wait, what is it?
First children's finance.
First children's finance. Sorry, I always get them first children's finance. So we engaged with them um to provide the task force with data um on where we are now in terms of childcare um gaps and opportunities in central Vermont. And so the task force is going to meet again to look at the report and decide, um, is it a good opportunity to come and report to council? meet again to look at the report and decide, um, is it a good opportunity to come and report to council? As like a stopgate of what they've learned and then potentially seek recommendations um, and build more excitement around that committee, because there's, it's small. Um, but the recommendations are really good based on the data, so that might be coming in the next few weeks, but it's not, you know, urgent because we are going into budget season. And we do have our economic subcommittee meeting tomorrow night. Um, so just wanted to give a quick update on this, please.
Great, thanks. I have a couple of things to mention in the mayor's report. One is, uh, I received, uh, a letter and a check from Joe Troyano, the uh, executive director of the Montpelier Housing Authority, uh, sending us a check for fourteen thousand and change for the, uh, payment in lieu of taxes for Pioneer Apartments. Um, they always, uh, come through with, uh, with payment in lieu of taxes and, and they may be the only nonprofit, uh, in this city that does.
I know they are.
There, there was a time when the Unitarian Church was making some, was paying fifty dollars a year or something, but, but so far as I know, Montpelier Housing Authority always does and there, I like to give them credit for that. Um, two, um, I've received, um, letters from, from some of the organizations that got funded from, by the, uh, community fund, and so I just, since we receive the letters, I wanna mention, we heard letters, got letters from Home Share Vermont, Vermont Humanities, uh, Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired and North Branch Nature Center. And they didn't have to do it, I certainly appreciate it, we'll, we'll say, these are now public records and so I don't know, John should get them or Kelly should get them, but, uh, I'll pass them to you and we'll, they just, they should just be somewhere so they're accessible in case people, uh, want to, uh, want to see them, and then the last thing is that, that Jim mentioned, uh, Jim and Kelly, maybe you both mentioned Trash Tramps, uh, I happened to be on the, uh, on the radio this morning on W V M T Drive Shot Time Program with Dan Feliciano and the first thing he said to you, I was just there to talk about Montpelier in general, the first thing he said to me was how great he was here in Montpelier recently, he felt, thought the city looks great, the fact that, uh, the graffiti removal team is on top of getting the graffiti covered up or removed as when it goes up is really, uh, left a positive impression to him, the graffiti removal and, and the, uh, trash pickup has been a tremendous improvement. And one of the things we talked about is that I think we all know that if you go into a place where there's a lot of graffiti, it just makes people feel like you've lost control of, of the environment and it makes people feel scared to even be there. And so, another big thumbs up for those guys.
You should have seen their presentation of about fifty photos of what they've done, it was just awesome.
And that's what I've got. Now to the city clerk.
I just wanna mention that the ballots did come week for the November elections, so they are available. We've got the first wave of, uh, probably ballot requests out in the mail today. Also mentioned, because you're getting a few questions about it, and I'm hearing more about it and what can you tell me about, and I even got one from someone a little bit. But gotta be really careful about this, it's not, even if it's a city, can't, can't talk too much about it, but it's really up to the Career Center to locate space and get that information out there that I probably shouldn't be doing it, because I don't wanna slip in any way and seem, be seen as putting my finger on the scale and all, so I wanna apologize upfront to everyone listening for you the unhelpfulness that I will be providing. When you say unhelpfulness, the helpfulness I won't be.
Thanks John. And Kelly.
So just a, a few things, um, earlier tonight in the budget presentation, um, Sarah mentioned the C A T, uh, meeting, which has been scheduled for me next Wednesday. So I hope for the members that are part of that committee that works, so we just went ahead and scheduled it, so. I just wanna flag that for everybody, um, and then we can maybe work on getting an invite to use it on your calendars. Um, also, just, I was thinking, I just a little bit of a list here, um, the holiday schedule, just kind of to take the pulse of, you know, how you'd like to handle, um, meetings uh, that are during sort of the Thanksgiving or Christmas holiday. We don't have to decide tonight, but, you know, as we're talking about the budget and talking about what's coming down the line, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas, we might want to shift those meetings, so in November, I think probably likely we'd like to propose meeting two weeks in a row, so it would be the twelfth and the nineteenth instead of the twenty-fourth and then, um, well, twenty-seventh. Um, and then for the, um, December meeting, it would be the twelfth, the tenth and the seventeenth instead of the Christmas week, so there would be those two meetings right together, and I also mentioned that just because, um, at tonight's meeting, there was a lot on the agenda and we got through it, which was amazing and, you know, really been kind of contemplating how to get things in front of you in a way that's helpful, but then also very productive and so that we can get through things, we've got a lot to cover. That's a long-winded way of saying that, I think we're gonna try to work with the schedule that we have. I'm gonna try to rearrange some things on the docket, but um, if we do need to have additional meetings related to the budget, we can and will. Um, that's why in January, we'll likely be proposing that there would be maybe three meetings leading up to needing to approve the budget, so that would be the seventh, fourteenth and twenty-first. Um, so just to kind of, you know, we're thinking about how to get everything scheduled, but we'll also be bringing you presentations like we did tonight, so that we can kind of get you prepped and then any questions that you have, please send them along, we're committed to the process and just making sure that you get what you need. Um, so that's a, just a rough outline of, you know, budget stuff, holiday schedule, that seems like that works for folks, I'm gonna maybe just kind of like go with that. Um, and I can bring a, a item forward just to get it approved if you'd like as well. Um, let's see. So, um, while we're on the subject of meetings, because who doesn't like to talk about a meeting, um, our last night, um, in this room was tonight, and so we'll be going back upstairs, and so I just wanted to remind folks of that. Um, I did get, um, an update on the elevator at City, at the City Hall, because I thought you might be interested in that. Um, so we, um, have that, uh, ordered, but gonna take a little bit of time, so we were projecting that it would be January or February and it's looking like it will probably likely be the tail end of February. I know, so I just, I, I, we're hopeful for a time meeting day. John, so just, you know, making sure we're transparent about like where we're at with that, uh, and I know, I know, but I just wanted to also just, you know, put that out there publicly in terms of like we are trying to get the elevator fixed, there will also be more to come on a future agenda item related to FEMA rebuilds. We did get some positive news in our weekly meeting that, you know, things are advancing um, to a questioning phase, which means that the package that we've given them is good. Um, so I'm pleased with that and I'll, um, put a little bit about that maybe in the banner of weekly. But more to come in terms of just an update on the Stevens and Associates report where we are and then what we would be doing next to rebuild at City Hall. So that's a whole nother, uh, area that, you know, won't need to address, so just wanted to say that, um, and then the last bit of good news, uh, Chris and I were up at Country Pub Road today, Turtle Island is moving in. Um, and so that's really, really exciting, um, they are gonna be doing their final walkthrough, um, Friday, and then once they are up and running, they would like to do an open house and a ribbon cutting. So it's just really nice, um, that's happening, the space is so nice in terms of just it's light, they have the space that they need, you know, and there's opportunity there, I think, for children and families that, you know, um, Turtle Island, where it was announced, it was pretty sweet and special to the community, but I think this location will be too, so that's what I have.
Thanks Kelly. Alright, and with that, this, this is early. Ten oh eight, and we are adjourned.